Are we going out there? I could go socialize.
Welcome, everybody, to our afternoon session on January 28, 2014. If I can please have a roll call from our city clerk.
Billisich.
Present.
Capman Gomez. Dodge. Hernandez.
Present.
Hurst.
Here.
Montesino.
Here.
Cervantes.
Here. And everyone, please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty.
And before moving on to presentations and oral communications, I would just like to make the announcement for anyone needing translation equipment. Now for presentations and oral communications, this is a time set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. And please state your name and address or district that you live in before making your comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rhea Dehart, District Seven resident. I'm really delighted to tell you tonight that Let the People Vote petition campaign and that we now have three petitions that have qualified for the June ballot. The mayor, thank you, the mayor petition and the vacancy petition overwhelmingly qualified. We were notified on Monday. Now, this is thanks to dedicated and committed proponents who juggling three clipboards, if you've ever juggled three clipboards, it's a real feat. Knocking on doors, ringing doorbells, attending all social meetings and club meetings, badgering friends and relatives to sign their petition, even at church services before the services, going down the aisle, gathering signatures. We even had one member who was hospitalized and was having hospital attendants sign the petitions. So with that kind of dedication, you can imagine, we turned in over 4,000 signatures on the mayor, over 4,000 signatures on the vacancy one. So I think we realize that we have great thanks, great, great thanks to the voters of Watsonville who really want to have their voices heard. And I would say that right now, Act One has finished. And so we begin Act Two on the ballot to let the people vote.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Linda Haynes and I am a real estate broker here in Watsonville. Most of you attended the meeting with the FEMA insurance gal for our meeting yesterday. Most of you were there. However, while she was explaining how the laws were on the books and how they would be implemented, it didn't soften the blow, the horrific blow that's going to happen to this community and all communities throughout this nation. Now, this is a letter that I wrote to Sam Far. And it's filled with factual information. This is not hearsay or coulda, woulda, shoulda. These are facts. "The flood insurance impact is threatening to destroy the value in the homes in the flood plains areas here in Watsonville. There must be an immediate action taken to protect these homeowners and the values of their properties. We just received word that a property recently purchased in the adult senior community is being charged over $5,000 a year for their flood insurance." It's a new policy. Gentleman's name is Mr. Carlsberg. He purchased on Bronte. He received a quote for $1,285 for his flood insurance because it was a new purchase, only three weeks later to receive a bill from FEMA for $5,390, which is going to come out to approximately $449 a month for his flood insurance. Now, at this point, he understands and realizes that with that kind of insurance burden, it's going to decrease the value of his home. That's a logical assessment for anybody. Do all understand how the property values will drop because of these outrageous flood insurance premiums? Two different homeowners told me when their property values drop below what they owe on their property, they will simply walk away from their mortgages. And so it begins. Logically, this act of raising flood insurance premiums to an unaffordable rate doesn't sound like it could really happen, but it is happening. A property on Spruce Circle, for sale, in contract, found out her property or her flood hazard, excuse me, her flood insurance would be $5,000 a month, she walked away from the transaction. Now, I understand my time is up. What I need from this council is a solemn promise that you will act in concert together to create some kind of a petition went out to the community to sign, to send to Sam Far, to do something about repealing the new flood law that was passed in July of 2012, the Biggers Waters Flood Reform Act. Please look it up. Many on the council are aware of what I'm talking about. There are some who are not. Please help us do something about this because our property values will decline and upon that, your tax base, your property tax base will decline also. This is an economic disaster for not only us, but the entire country.
Thank you.
Rhea Dehart, District Seven. I also attended the FEMA meeting last night. And what Ms. Haynes has told you is just devastating to the senior community or to anyone who lives in that senior community. But I want to tell you that today I attended as a non-voting member of the flood committee, Zone Seven, in Santa Cruz. And you know, that board consists of the five supervisors plus councilwoman Nancy Billisich and Rick Persoff. They're the voting members. Then Stokes, Siri, and myself are non-voting members of that zone, Zone Seven. During 2013, Councilwoman Billisich has been the chair of that committee and Supervisor Greg Cabot has been the vice chair. Today, at the committee, they decided to retain Councilwoman Billisich as chair of Zone Seven Flood Committee and Greg Cabot as vice chair. I think that's really great because the next three meetings, the meetings for 2014, will be here in Watsonville because we're the flood people down here in Watsonville and we're the ones who really are devastated by some of this news. So I think that we're really lucky that the meetings will be held here. They'll be in the evening and we really need to get the word out to the community.
Thank you. My name is Dan Hernandez. I'm a lifelong resident of Watsonville. But today, I'm kind of proud of certain things that have happened today. Mainly it was Rhea and company who helped get all the signatures for the petitions and propositions that are on the ballot. And Act One is just beginning because I know Rhea, I was one of her students, and she's going to teach us a lesson, a lesson in integrity in politics. And number one, number one thing in integrity, you like to look the people right in the eyes because then you know where they're coming from. Anything less than that is less than honest. But you know what? It's a good tool that you also could use, but I wonder if you even thought that far. At least I know one of the members that I could have a conversation with him, that's Mr. Felipe Hernandez. At one time, I didn't like how he got appointed. Still don't, but I found out something out. He's a pretty decent individual. You know, he could have won that seat on his own. He didn't have to go through the shenanigans that you put him through. And now, now he's in the position to possibly do something good if you understand what I'm talking about. And if you don't, well, that's your loss. Thank you.
Gary Richard Arnold, Mayor, Councilman. This will be kind of like a shorthand. I think the military, police, and some of the smarter students will be able to follow some of the dots. You've all been given a magazine that dwelt on the age of surveillance and the fact that the country is turning into a police state. In fact, the California State Legislature made a resolution against its own, you know, Democratic precedent as to the facts of the abuses and the accumulation of power in the executive branch. This didn't begin with Obama at all. It began with George Bush, who brought in Primakoff from the KGB and Wolf from the Stasi secret police from East Germany in order to put together the Patriot Act, which now rules America. The practice also of using both the Justice Department and the IRS against critics is evil, and that's what is going on. Gary Pruitt of Associated Press, who sells the virtues of the United States converting to a third-class European Union, even has shown his concern about the accumulation of power in the presidency and in its extension, its nationalization of local police, its requirement for the states to line up and do the duties of a dictatorship rather than have them make their own policy and be individual and a check on the balance of power. There is presently, before every dictatorship that's been followed by genocide, has been registration and confiscation of guns. There is a concerted effort to abolish the Second Amendment that allows you to protect your family against criminals and a government that goes criminal. The worst crime is committed in those places where guns are forbidden to honest citizens like Chicago and Washington, D.C. We don't get information here locally because of the Bill Gates Three newspapers and the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Michael Watkins, who's an operative of ICLI, which is a front for the World Bank. He's been out there trying to advocate the abandonment of the Second Amendment. The reason for the increase in crimes has been the excuse for the militarization of police. We know that during the Vietnam War, it was the Golden Triangle. I went to school with Colonel Bull Greitze, who came back and talked to Kun Sa, who ran the Golden Triangle, who brought the drugs in through Air America, which is American military. And presently, we hear today that Afghanistan, which grows, is an occupied country by the United States, grows a poppies. And the President Karzai is saying that the Americans are committing false flags operations in order to keep the American troops there. I encourage people to get a free download on their computer called America's Secret Establishment. And I hope that you're, keep your police independent and protect our checks and balances.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Rhea took a lot of my fireworks tonight, but I would like to say that the vacancy petition did reach the 25 or 2,400 that we needed. In fact, we were at about 3,000, a little bit over 3,000 when we stopped. So we were going to go all the way. We had over 4,000 total. So that's very good for us. I would like to say thank you. Thank you to Nancy Billisich. Thank you to Greg Cabot. Thank you to all the volunteers that went door-to-door for us and all of the networking that went on within our community to make this happen. So thank you. And we'll be seeing you on the ballot hopefully in June, but we'll find out that, I guess, at your next meeting. I would like to say that I did come to you on the meeting in December and I asked for your support on this. And I understand it's a difficult issue for many of you. And I wanted to address Mr. Hurst directly tonight. I want to say I agree with you. The city has some very, very serious problems right now. Unemployment is at levels that we haven't seen. Poverty, education, crime, we're doing okay, but it's still an issue in our community. And I'm going to say to Mr. Hurst that I understand that those are the most important issues that we're facing today. But I disagree with you on one item. I disagree that the seven of you are going to be the people that are going to solve these problems for this community. The people that are going to solve these problems are these people right here, this community, these people. They're going to be the ones that are going to do that, not you. You're going to participate and you're going to help. And I know that that's important to you to do that. But it's going to be these folks. It's going to be each one of them going out and making a difference in this community. And what we've done for these folks is we've given them something. We've given them a little bit of skin in the game. That's what we've done. We've put them in the game. Now, like Rhea said, it's a lot of apathy in this community before we got started. Many of you had no challenges to yourselves when you ran. And I know that you would have more meaning in what you're doing if somebody challenged you, if there was thought in this chamber, if we had a market of political ideas for our community. So I say to you tonight, it's never too late. You can join our group. You can become part of what we're doing. And I guess we'll see you in a couple of weeks and hopefully you will consider putting us on the June ballot. Because I know when Mr. T came up, I remember thinking, over 2,000 people signed that petition. They deserve the right to have a vote. And I know that's not a very popular opinion in this community, in this community, but I've always thought that. And so I'm asking the same of you, Daniel. Come to us. Let us have, over 2,000 people, 2,400 have signed this petition. Let's give them the opportunity to vote and become part of the process. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Good to see you all again. I've got a couple of different issues to talk to you about tonight. The first two are public safety issues. First one is I've noticed more than once, in fact, a number of times, young people sitting on the window sills of the parking garage, of the new parking garage. And I hope one of them doesn't have to fall off there before some safety thing is done, you know, that'll make it uncomfortable for him to sit there or, you know, somehow you'll deal with that. The second one is definitely a health issue. It's public restrooms in this town. Now, I went on the ground from Amsterdam to New Delhi, India, and every one of those countries had public restrooms in their cities that were totally maintained by the government. The people weren't maintaining, the government was doing it. What we've observed here in Watsonville, we clean. While we're looking for something else, we just noticed that, for instance, in the parking lots, that's what people are using for a restroom. And what's happening is these mothers, you know, that have like three, four, five kids along with them, they get out of the car. They can't keep their eye on all those kids. The next thing you know, the kids are over on the side of the parking lot. The mothers are thinking, oh, well, at least they won't get run over. But they're playing in the place where the adults are going to the bathroom. And it's definitely a health issue. And it's because there's no public bathrooms here. The next issue is, you know, I guess you guys just don't take me seriously. You think I'm buffalo-chipping here, or I don't know what you're thinking. But when I was serious as AIDS, when I told you I can help you with the substance abuse thing, that is for real. What I'm going to try and do to encourage you to work with me is give you some references from the state of Washington. That's where I was when I wrote the book. I worked it into a few places in the government up there. I'm sure that you can, you know, you'll be able to contact some people up there that will let you know that I am who I say I am. It's for real. And then the last issue is the nonviolence. I'm not hearing from any of you guys. You know, there's people dying out there. They're killing each other in this town. And every day I'm here, I love this town a little bit more. And so, you know, it hurts me too. And, you know, I heard not one of you guys that are sitting here now, but one of the past council members say it's getting like Chicago around here. It's not even early in the morning in Chicago. I know you guys feel it when somebody's getting hurt or killed out there in this violence. You know, and we can stop it. We definitely can. But if you don't get, if you don't work with me, I'll just go around you. You know, but I know that every one of you guys can contribute to the nonviolence thing. And we can, we can make something out of Watsonville that the world will see. And we'll come here, you know, to see how we did it.
Thank you, Mr. Ling.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the council on items not on the agenda? I'm going to close public comment and turn it back over to the city council for their oral communications. Dr. Billisich.
Well, good evening. First, I'd like to start with the FEMA meeting that some of us attended last night. That was eye-opening, I think, to everyone in the community. There are probably, I don't know, 50, 100 people there. That's a lot of people. And people very concerned about what FEMA is doing and the effects on our community. I heard one realtor talk about a home in Real Del Mar where they had I heard one realtor talk about a home in Real Del Mar where they had $1,400, $1,400 a year that was the payment, and they bought this house, and the flood insurance, $20,000. I mean, this is FEMA, the woman, all she said was that we have been subsidized by the federal government, and now we're going to have to pay these full fees. And you heard Mrs. Haynes talk about it. People in this community are talking about it everywhere, and people are very, very upset that we have this horrific increase, especially at this time, when, what do we have? A drought. We're talking about reducing water 20%. We're talking about all of that, and we're talking, FEMA's talking to us about, well, we have to increase your flood rates. Have you seen water in that river lately? I mean, we don't have any water. So, I would propose, if we can, to have city staff help us draft a letter to Congressman Farr, and Senators Boxer, and Feinstein, and any others who can help us at the national level, if you agree, so that we can be heard. This has to change, and I think we need to do whatever we can to try and help all of our residents. So, that's, that's one of my proposals, if the council's in agreement. I don't know.
Yes, at our next meeting, we can bring forward a resolution and a letter as well.
That would be great, because I think the residents are looking to us to do something. And at least if we can do this, that would be a start in the right direction. I also would like to congratulate all the people at the Chamber Dinner. That was a very nice event, and the Chamber did a great job. Some of us were there, and it's nice to see people in our community get recognized for all of their volunteerism, and it was a very well-put-on event. And then, let the people vote. I'd like to congratulate members of that committee, because once again, it's the democratic process. Will these get elected? Will these things change? We don't know, because we haven't had an election. But what we do know is that residents were concerned enough that they went out and got petitions. And now, we're going to have issues on the ballot. And this is an opportunity of the democratic process. I mean, grassroots, people came in, they put these on the ballot. Will they win, or will they lose? We don't know the outcome, but it's the same thing as, you know, Measure T. It got on the ballot. Okay, there's the outcome. So, now, this is three more initiatives where people have an opportunity to vote, and I think that's really great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there council members wishing to address us during oral communications? Councilmember Dodge?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to take a moment and really acknowledge Officer Skip Priggy, who left us recently, retired from the force, facing some severe medical challenges with the ALS, and we've honored ALS victims, if you will. Maybe that's the wrong word. And we just want to send, it's a disease that has no known cure at this particular time. So, I just wanted to be able to send out some blessings from us here in the city, the city council, and my family and such, for him and his family in a difficult period of time that they will be facing the upcoming months, and thank him for all the service that he, I'm sorry, you know, I think that, I just think that, but dealing with some of the health issues that affect people in our community are, have been very severe, and Skip Priggy was, served this community up until Sunday, for many, many years, and I just want to send blessings to him and his family, and offer whatever services we could provide to be able to help him. I would like to also thank Ms. Haynes for coming and speaking to us tonight about gathering public support. I was at that meeting last night with FEMA. It is a crisis that our community will face. It's hard to imagine that it was just thrown upon us without any notice. Myself, I met with several times with, at public meetings with people that live in the Senior Village, also District One and District Two will be affected by this rapid increase of, sometimes case of doubling completely, their homeowners' insurance. And it will cause quite a change in the real estate market for an affordable area of our community for seniors, and also the residents of District One and District Two who are near the levee will be severely impacted. So, it's really a crisis that we're just throwing upon us. I look forward to us having more dialogue and being able to offer our assistance to communicate with Congressman and Sam Farr, but through others throughout the state who need to be able to hear our voice and maybe align ourselves with other communities that are affected by these drastic rates. As I've reported back to this council on several occasions, we're continuing forth and with, in conjunction with city staff, Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District staff, to be look at some of the issues pertaining to safety for our residents, but also the customers and bus riders, bus drivers, people that use public transportation in our community. We're going to be announcing as, in future dates, more of input on design review of the Santa Cruz Metropolitan Transit District Center, located here on Rodriguez Street. Recently, the, and we have to enter into a memorandum understanding with the Transportation District to be able to secure greater broadband access to provide for greater opportunities to be able to have surveillance in that area. So, I wanted to be able to say those things, and also, if we could ask city staff, if we could, I've had some concerns about the elevators and the parking lot across the street from the county building. I guess that's Second and Rodriguez. I guess some of the lights are out there, and we want to be able to make sure that people feel safe when they use those parking lots, particularly the county workers that are there. So, I wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Councilmember Montesino?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Really want to thank everyone in the community for coming. I see a lot of, a lot of people here. Really big issues that we're going to talk about later in the afternoon, but also, I wanted to give the mayor a piece of rock, piece of cement, that I got from the Regional Transportation Commission, because I'm the chair this year, and we recently finished a project over on the Fonda Bridge part of the project, and that's very good news. So, that's one of my pledges that I did during my campaign to move that project along. So, I just want, I'll give this to the mayor, because I brought one for you.
Don't throw it.
I'm giving it to you. And I also, I also want to just say kudos to the, some of the members of the Youth Council that are here present, and that are going to hopefully join the conversation and see what, from their perspective, what they see. So, thank you very much, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hurst?
Yes, thank you very much. Just a couple of announcements. The, there's going to be a ceremony at Fort Orta on Saturday. It's called the Fort Chaplains Memorial Service, and it's primarily for veterans and families of veterans, acknowledging the sacrifice that Fort Chaplains made back in World War II, and bringing attention to the issues of violence, wars, the sacrifices that our servicemembers have performed. Speaking of sacrifice, the FEMA meeting yesterday, and I attended in the afternoon and heard the professional meeting with the, with the real estate agents and the insurance professionals, it is very concerning. It is, you know, great and sad news to so many in the community that their rates have been subsidized for many years, and they probably hadn't known about it, and that the, that their adjustments and modifications have been pulled back. And so, it's a sad fact of a shrinking and reducing government that's kind of abandoning many of our folks in the flood zone. So, I'm hopeful that the council can help do something about that. I was in attendance at the Eco Farm Conference recently in Pacific Grove, and it was filled with hope in that there's a lot of young farmers out there, and a lot of folks that are ecologically conscious, conscious, that want to have a better life, and they want to have a cleaner environment, and they want to have more jobs and more opportunities. And I'm glad that Mr. Dana's here this evening, and he's addressed me personally regarding the issues of public safety and poverty and unemployment. And when it comes to unemployment, there's a lot of people that have had their unemployment pulled back from them as of the end of last month. Millions of people throughout the nation have had their unemployment benefits suspended and put on hold, and so, this is another economic crisis in the community, the discontinuance of many people's unemployment benefits. I was also glad to hear him say that there are people with skin in the game, but what didn't come out here yet is the skin in the game that the paid consultants have received from the petition gathering, and the fact that, you know, that someone somehow has found three issues and gone out and gotten outside funding, and has been able to, you know, gin up these concerns, and Rhea mentioned it, badgering. I heard the paid petition gatherers at the table badgering and misleading people to sign the petitions, and they were out-of-towners, and they were paid. And so, knowing that a third of the petitions were disqualified, I don't know how much the petition gatherers received in payment, but clearly, the funding of the petition gatherers needs to be a little more transparent. Sorry, I'm out of town.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
I've got a summary here of some of my comments for this evening. The FEMA presentation for the residents, of course, that was last evening, and it was well-attended not only once, but twice, for the public as well as for the professionals in our community. And the Senate did vote for delay on implementing any of the immediate rate increases. There have been increases, but there's another process going on for a significant increase that has been postponed for further discussion with the Senate. And that's why it's important during this communication and debate process that we do support what we, what is going on in our community that will have a significant financial impact for the excess costs of what those policies would be, especially in light of a lot of the levee work that's been done around here, that is being as proactive as we possibly can be. Putting the money into the resources to be proactive is a much more cost-effective approach than into the premiums, which are then subsidizing what's going on with the Hurricane Katrina's and the Sandys that are out there. So, I do want to encourage everybody that is involved or that has any impact on this to, again, write to the legislators, let Sam Farr's office know about it, get some petitions going out there. The more PR that's plugged into this, the better off we are in terms of having them understand it. A lot more dynamics with that particular law, but we still need to have the voice heard, and we need to hear a lot more of your voices out there on that subject better. And again, we understand the property values. A $450 premium is probably about $100,000 or more in just the dollar amount of what the cost of a house would be. In other words, $100,000 mortgage is probably the cost of what that premium is that somebody can no longer qualify for, because it's a significant cost for the, any household budget, let alone trying to get the property financed at that point. Water conservation, we'll be hearing a little bit more about that. Cell phone tower, I'm sure we're going to hear a little bit more about that and some of the dialogue in taking a look at some of the planning commission notes that have been conveyed here at previous meetings. I'd like to also acknowledge that we've had David Kikuchi, 35 years of providing service for our community, Rob Ryan, Jerry Carey, Julián Olivera, with 25 years of dedicated service for our community as our employees here for the city of Watsonville. So, again, thank you for your years of dedication and that honor. The fires in the park are another concern that I'm having some further discussions with, not only with the police, the fire, but I'm also trying to find some other outreach agencies involved with regarding the mental health situation, the cleanup situation, other organizations involving us to work collectively on that project to try and do what we possibly can on remedying the situation there. It's just one thing to remove these camps, but the overall root of the situation is to find options, solutions, and alternatives for, to address the underrepresented residents that have found themselves in this situation. So, I'm hoping that rather than just tearing down the camps, cleaning it up, that there's more resolution so that we don't have the reoccurrence happen there. The jobs aspect of things. Foremost priority for our community, I'm looking for creative resources to help facilitate employment efforts to help reduce our unemployment numbers. I've had conversations with the Workforce of Santa Cruz that provides resources to our employers, looking for upgrade, the training and skills of their employees. The incentives are available for employers to go ahead and educate their staff to bring up their skill levels, and that might also offer opportunities for some of the employees to come up through that process and get better pays in the process of getting further education out there. So, this is a process for some of these employers, looking to get more skills with their current employees in going through that.
Last comment?
And I also, Anna, the former mayor, Anna Ventura-Ferris, has also commented that she is also looking for openings with the County of Santa Cruz for jobs as well. So, I'm encouraging a lot of people to think that if they've got the skill set, or if they've got some goals in mind, that, to keep that in mind too, for the openings that are in our community here for employment opportunities.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor Hernandez?
I'll keep it really brief. I just wanted to thank all the local entrepreneurs and city staff as well. We have close to 40 new small businesses here in the city of Watsonville, including one pet store that I want to put a word out about. We have our own Watsonville pet store now, or a pet food store, called the Wishbone Pet Company out in Freedom Center. So, I, we don't have to travel to Santa Cruz to go buy our pet foods now. We can buy it here and leave our tax dollars here in Watsonville. The other event that I had a really great time joining was the, I went to the crab feed at the, at the Portuguese Community Hall. It's a really great event, you know, I always have a good time at that place. I encourage anyone that, you know, hasn't been to it to attend it. It's one of the, one of the funnest events we have here in Watsonville, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you for your comments. I just wanted to recognize Felicia Davidson, who is the mayor for the Youth City Council. She was featured in the Santa Cruz Sentinel, and I just wanted to highlight her commitment to public service. I know that she works with the Rotary Interact Club, Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez's group, and she was also volunteering at the Pajaro Valley Chamber of Commerce and Agricultural Dinner that was just held this past Saturday. So, it's just really great to see her level of involvement at such a young age, and definitely going forward as a community leader. Also recognizing Dulce Zixto y Juanita Álvarez, who are also part of the same Youth City Council. And for them, I just wanted to recognize that they were admitted to the very prestigious program, the Ivy League Tour, and they themselves are fundraising currently now to make the trip over to various prestigious universities this summer. So, if you can, you know, connect with them, learn about the program, and even further, if you're able to sort of help in some way to make that trip possible, that's an added benefit. I know that on the agenda, we have the discussion about the drought, but I did want to just highlight very briefly that this afternoon, you know, various local jurisdictions, as well as various water agencies, you know, came together to sort of outline a concerted plan and a coordinated response to the declared emergency regarding the drought that was declared by Governor Brown. And I just wanted to, you know, reiterate, restate our commitment to working with others in the region on being able to reduce and conserve more water to assure our continued water supply. And that'll conclude my oral communications at this time. The next item on the agenda is a report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council received reports on both items on tonight's closed session agenda, but took no final action.
Thank you. I'm going to start making my way down, because we do have a proclamation declaring today Wetlands Day. So, let me get that ready. Are some of the folks here from Wetlands Watch, great, come on up. Are some of the folks here from Wetlands Watch, great, come on up.
So I just wanted to take this opportunity to welcome Wetlands Watch here to our chamber and to also read a little of the proclamation, again, sort of declaring today Wetlands World's Watch Day. And I just wanted to read a little bit of the proclamation, not all of it, but just to, you know, generally appreciate all the work that you do here in our community. Since the wetlands of the Pajaro Valley play a vital ecological role in the health, beauty and enjoyment of our local environment. And whereas since 1992, Watsonville Wetlands Watch has been working to protect and foster appreciation of our local wetlands through tours and lectures and hands-on restoration and community education. And whereas the education programs provide to the children of the Watsonville Wetlands Watch, teaching young people to appreciate the ecological and cultural functions of the wetlands and to embrace their responsibilities as stewards of the environment. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Watsonville recognizes February 2nd, 2014 as World Wetlands Day and commends Watsonville Wetlands Watch for its ongoing stewardship of our precious wetlands, again, a rich ecological treasure in the heart of our community.
Want to introduce yourselves, Danny, please? Thank you so much. We are so honored to have received this proclamation from the city of Watsonville, from all the council members, from the mayor. Thank you so much. You know, we're really blessed to live in an area where we have such a precious ecosystem like the Watsonville Wetlands. It's one of the last remaining freshwater wetlands in California. So the fact that we have one right here in our midst and we are able to all go out and walk around the beautiful trails that the city of Watsonville have created for us, over six miles of trails so far and in the future, looking towards up to 30. Recently, the RTC approved with a grant that the city of Watsonville made for an extension for the rail trail to come down here. So now our community members, our children, adults, and even people from North County, Mid County, Monterey County can come up here and use the trails and be able to traverse the entire rail trail from here and back and forth. That's quite an accomplishment. And I want to congratulate the city of Watsonville for being able to get that through the RTC. You all deserve a real big round of applause for that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
And when that happens, we're going to just have more glorious nature that we're going to be able to get to. So that was one thing I just wanted to applaud you for. And I also wanted to say, the Watsonville Wetlands Watch is really proud to have the partnership that we have with the city of Watsonville. It's few organizations, especially ecologically oriented organizations, that can have the kind of collaboration with government entities and especially the city that Watsonville Wetlands Watch enjoys. And as a result of that, we're able to do so much together. We do a lot of restoration together. Our beautiful wetlands and grasslands are part of that. The World Wetlands Day celebration that we just, proclamation that we just received is very appropriate because this coming Sunday is International World Wetlands Day. And on Saturday, the city of Watsonville, in conjunction with Watsonville Wetlands Watch, are sponsoring a restoration celebration on the sleaze. So Saturday morning, we're going to have a nice, big restoration that we're going to be doing together. And the thing that's so wonderful about that is that over the course of the years that we've been jointly sponsoring that with the city, we have seen the community engagement grow. And I think it's a direct result of the city of Watsonville's collaboration with us and getting the community, educating the community and all of us joining together, coming out to do that. So I wanted to also thank you very much for that. Lastly, I just want to say that we are all in the community together to try to create just a more beautiful place that we can get out into nature. Oftentimes, we spend a lot of times in our homes, in our offices, in our cars, in front of TVs and computers. And the fact that we have this wonderful wetland, over 800 acres of wetlands that we have around here that we can get out to on trails is just really wonderful for our community, for our adults, for our kids to get out and to get back in touch with nature. And also the educational programs that we have. I know we have a joint interest in education as well. And one of the programs I wanted to mention that Watsonville Wetlands Watch has is called the Wetland Stewards. And not only do we have one of our first graduates from the Wetland Stewards here with us, but she has now also joined the Watsonville Wetlands Watch Board, Athena Barrios, who I'm going to turn the mic over to. And I'm going to let Athena tell you a little bit more about that program and how it has helped enrich her life. And we are very enriched by Athena. So thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, city, for the proclamation. This means a lot to me personally. I grew up here in Watsonville, kind of Prunkdale, Watsonville, but between both places. And I took a liking to, you know, being outside, running out in the trees and, you know, just playing outdoors. So in high school, I decided to attend Pajaro Valley High School because it was an environmental science-based school. Now, with that being said, I was convinced that it was going to be doing a lot of proactive things for the environment. So I kind of took it upon myself to do that as well by joining the Wetland Stewards, which conveniently was up a staircase from my campus. So going to the Wetlands Education Resource Center and, you know, joining a team of people who allowed me to teach elementary school and even middle school students, you know, building curriculum as a high school student. I didn't realize what I was doing until now. So being a high schooler and going through that program for two years was really eye-opening for me because I am now an informal environmental educator and I focus on teaching marine science to kids and trying to engage them by doing a lot of hands-on stuff, being on the beach, walking the wetlands, you know, pointing out birds and hoping that they really like them because I do. You know, try to inspire them to do a lot more meaningful stuff in their own community. So that's what I'm trying to convey and I'm working hard to continue doing that. So joining the board was one more step towards doing it, including, you know, going through their docent training, being probably one of the youngest to do it, which was not a problem. It was just more fun to hang out with, you know, other birders like me. So going through that program and then being able to be a docent and volunteering and then just being a part of the community is really fun. So thank you so much for this. This really means a lot.
Thank you all for being here. Introduce yourself as the director? Okay. Thanks.
Good for your work. Thank you.
I'm just going to grab the other certificates because we also have some recognitions for some homeowners that got into the holiday spirit and were recognized for their decorations. And I know that a lot of them aren't here today, but I am going to just call out their names and recognize their work. Recognition to Ron Hadeke, Best Outdoor Tree. He's here with, he's not here with us today. Annabelle Smith was recognized for Best Indoor Tree. Awesome, they are here today. From District One.
Awesome, thank you. I want to take a quick. Oh, got it. Did you want to say anything?
It was just great. It's great to be part of the contest. We really enjoyed it, so we appreciate it.
Congratulations. Really enjoyed the call. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Strike? From District Six, recognized for, again, well, actually, second place for Best Indoor Lighted Tree. Galino Medina, District Six. Not with us today, but recognized for Best House and Yard Contemporary, first place. Mike Carranco, District Six. All right.
Yay! Congratulations.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Oh, yes, definitely. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just wanted to thank those brave women that went out there to judge all of these displays. December was the coldest winter we had in a long time and they should be getting an award today. So I want to thank those four women that went out there and judged all of the displays. And also, I just enjoy doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From District Seven, we have Ron and Lupe de Groot. Not here with us today, but congratulations. And then Miguel and Livia Camargo. They were from District Two and received recognition for the Best House and Yard in the religious category. And then we also had a winner from District Three, Joel Jaime and Rosio López for the Best Mobile Home Decoration. So our next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda Calendar. So all items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions, which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon on one consensus motion.
So move.
Okay. Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Dodge and a second by Dr. Billisich. Any discussion? May we get a roll call, please?
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Yes.
I would also like to just take a moment and congratulate Yolanda Danna to the Library Board.
Okay, item eight point one, new business. Now we have before us the Naming of Public Places or Property Initiative Petition. And we do have a staff report from our city clerk, Flores.
Mayor Cervantes and council members. On July 1st, 2013, Jerry Martin, Aurora Parker and Carlos Rico filed a notice of intent to circulate a petition to amend the Watsonville Municipal Code to require the naming of public places within the city or property owned by the city outside the city limits to be done solely with voter approval during a special or regular municipal election. The proposed measure also makes the initiative retroactive to apply to any proposed names considered by the council on or after the date of submission of notice of intent dated July 1st, 2013. City Attorney Smith prepared the ballot title and summary and was given to the proponents on July 16, 2013, as required by the California Elections Code. The notice of intent and title and summary were published by the proponents on July 20, 2013, and the certificate publication was filed in my office two days later. As the last report filed with the Secretary of State on February 25th, 2013, there were 16,052 registered voters in the city. The election code requires that not less than 10% or 1,605 of the registered voters sign the petition to place a measure on the next regular municipal election. And it requires not less than 15% or 2,408 to place a measure on the special election. The petitioners returned the petition with 3,208 signatures on October 30, 2013. The Santa Cruz County Elections Department examined the signatures for my office. On January 6, 2014, I issued a certificate of examination certifying the petition was sufficient with 2,250 valid signatures complying with the 10% requirement for a regular municipal election. Election Code 9215 requires me to certify the results of the examination to the council at its next regular meeting, and that's what I'm doing today. The petitioners did not obtain that required 15% signatures needed for a special election. However, they have submitted a letter included in your agenda packet as Attachment 5 requesting that the council order a special election during the state primary on June 3rd, 2014. The petitioners state that they believe that June 2014 election was a regular municipal election and halted gathering signatures to avoid calling a standalone special election. They also say they would like this measure to be considered by the voters, together with the other two charter amendments, which they submitted signatures on January 8th, 2014. I have received the results of the two proposed amendments and they have sufficient valid signatures to qualify for the June election. In regards to this petition, Election Code Section 9215 controls and provides the following three alternatives for the council to consider. If the initiative petition is signed by not less than 10% of the voters of the city, the council shall do one of the following. Adopt the ordinance without alteration at the regular meeting at which the certification of the petition is presented, which is today, or with 10 days after today. Or submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters pursuant to subdivision B of Section 1415 unless the ordinance petition for it is required to be or for some reason is submitted to the voters at a special election. The council can also order a report pursuant to Section 9212 at this meeting. And when the report is presented to the council, the council shall either adopt the ordinance within 10 days or order the election. The council could find that the reason to order a special election is that there will be other city measures on the June ballot and there could be no extra cost to the city by adding this measure. On the other hand, the council could determine that the voters may have expected this measure to be at the general municipal election in November, therefore allow it to be considered then. Financial impact, the cost for verification of the signatures for this petition is $2,600. The cost of a special election during a state primary is from $2 to $3 per registered voter. The city currently has 14,278 registered voters. Therefore, the cost of a special election could range from $28,000 to $43,000. Since none of this cost was anticipated, the council would have to approve a budget appropriation to amend the 2013-2014 budget at the time of, when the election is ordered. So the recommendation that you have before you today is that you accept the city clerk's certificate of sufficiency, that you, as required by the California Elections Code Section 9215, either adopt the ordinance without alteration, submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters on either June 3rd, 2014 at the state primary election or November 4, 2014. Or that you order a report pursuant to Election Code Section 9212. This concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
We'll have an opportunity now for city council members to ask any questions for clarification. Councilmember Dodge?
I just want to get a clarification on the second recommendation where it's adopt the ordinance without alteration within 10 days after it's presented, meaning 10 days from today?
Either today or within 10 days.
Okay. And, or submit the ordinance, without alterations to the voters on each of these elections. What's the difference of adopting the ordinance without alteration within 10 days and to submit the ordinance, just so they have clarification on that?
So you can adopt the ordinance as it is and it doesn't go to an election? The council can do that?
Oh, okay.
Right now.
That's, that's it? That's your definition?
That's.
I want to ask the clerk, so I'd like to.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
Can you describe a little bit more about order a report? What that entails? What is that? What information will we get from that as a request?
If you order a report, you can ask different, how this measure could affect the process, fiscal impact. It's up to the council to ask for a report with the type of information that you would like to have in it.
Okay. And if the ordinance were adopted, what savings would it have over an election process if it were put on a June ballot?
If the council ordered... If the council ordered, adopted the ordinance, in this case, since it looks like we're going to have other measures on the June ballot, there would not be a financial impact.
Thank you.
But part of that report could also be asking the question if, in terms of what the impact is, if this change in the ordinance is adopted at the ballot, it could also mean asking for a report of how much it would cost each time a park naming or building naming would come to the voters, how much that would cost?
Yes.
And right now, do you have an estimate of how much that would cost to bring a naming of a public place to the voters?
It could depend on when the proposal is made because there is a provision in this measure that it goes to the voters either at a special election or during a regular municipal election. So if this, if there was a proposal and there's no other elections, municipal or state, and it's a standalone election, it could range from $60,000 to $80,000.
To do a citywide election.
To do a citywide standalone election.
I have a couple more questions.
I'm sorry.
Yes, and so currently, the process that you outline in your report, could you just clarify for us what the current process is for naming a public place? Or some of the other places named?
Right now, the city has a resolution that was adopted in 1974 where the Parks and Recreation Commission has to, if there's a recommendation to name a place, they have to do notifications, publish notices a month before a public meeting. And then after that, they have to hold the meeting and have public hearings. So there is a process that was established in 1974.
And how much does that cost?
That only costs whatever cost for publication. And once it goes to the Parks and Recreation Commission, then they refer their recommendations to the city council. And the city council would also have to hold a public hearing.
So you're talking about currently, the process that's in place allows for various opportunities for public input when it comes to naming a facility, a park, any other city-owned facility?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodge?
No, my question was just sort of on what could be included in a report that we would ask for. That's... We're able to ask for a variety of things to be able to report back, including process, cost, even a history of when was the last time anything was named after anybody?
Yes.
When was the last time?
Oh, you're asking, I thought you meant...
Including that, too.
Yeah, including that. From looking at our records, it seems like it was in the 1990s when it came to the council.
The 1990s?
Yes.
So we haven't really had this on the council level since that affected the name of a public place since the 1990s?
Yes.
That might have been Frannich Park?
No, it was not.
No, that was the youth center. The Frannich Park was not named by the council.
Did they have a vote?
On the Frannich Park?
He owned the property.
Frannich Park was named as part of the dedication of the property from the landowner. It was part of the transaction.
Also, when the land was, when that land was donated to the city, the landowner requested that it be named after that?
Yes.
And that was in the 90s?
No, that was in the 2000s, and the 90s was the youth center.
So the last naming, the naming that proceeded to the council level, not the commission level?
No.
The council level was in the 1990s?
Yes.
And my other question just has to do with the current procedure that we have in place. It wasn't very clear, but it seems to me that under the current process, anybody can submit a name for a city-owned facility.
That's what it seems in the resolution.
And with the proposed changes, it would only be council members that would be submitting proposal names for facilities?
From what I'm reading, it could be, yes. I'm assuming that someone would recommend, and then the council could decide what name they want to put on the ballot.
But I think her question was, the way that this is written, only a council member could submit a name.
Or the seven of you.
Or all seven councilmembers.
Right, it says no more than, no more than seven names can appear in a ballot, and each council member, seven, can submit a name for the naming of a facility.
Yes.
Okay, just getting clarification about that. Councilmember Bilicich?
When you spoke of the cost, you said $60,000 to $80,000 for a standalone.
A standalone.
Okay, so what if it happened to be already initiatives from the city, whether it's June or November? What would be the cost then?
So if it's a June state primary, like the one we're going to have, it could be the same cost as I just mentioned. What was it?
Two to three.
Twenty-three to forty. If it's in November with a municipal election, and usually it's a presidential election or a state general election, it could be a lot less. But because they do have on the measure that it has to be on, it can be on a special or general municipal election, so if the proposal was done in those years when there's no elections, then it's when it's going to be more expensive. So it would just have to depend on when that proposal is made.
So special election is 60 to 80, and if it's...
Standalone.
Standalone, and if it's the other, it's how much?
If it's the November election, like our municipal election, it'd be a lot less. It could be less than 20,000, no, from 20 to $25,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got a question. So when is the last day to put things on the June ballot?
We have to have the resolutions to the Elections Department by March 7th. So our last meeting before that is February 25th.
What was the day? I'm sorry.
The city council meeting, February 25th.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions before we open this up for public input? Councilmember Hurst?
Yes, this only applies to municipal names of streets, parks, buildings. It has nothing to do with outside the city limits or school sites.
Not school sites. It does say that property owned by the city outside the city limits, it's included in that.
So not, not private property?
No.
Not schools, nothing in the county?
No.
Just public sites within the city limits?
Within the city, yes.
And whatever annexations might take place?
Well, for example, the Pinot Lake Park, it's outside the city limits. That would be included.
Like the water treatment plant?
The water treatment plant, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now is the opportunity for members of the public to come forward and address us on this particular agenda item.
Takes us a minute. We are some of the more senior citizens. I'm Jerry Martin. I'm a longtime resident of, born and raised in Watsonville, and became involved in this proposal because of the many people that I highly respect for their long-term service to the city of Watsonville and to our community. I'd like to read the letter that was included in your packet. "As the chief proponent, Carlos Rico, myself, Jerry Martin, and Aurora Parker, to the recently verified Let the People Vote Initiative naming public places or property, we request the initiative be placed on the June 2014 election ballot. The collection of signatures for this initiative was halted before we reached 15% of the signatures of the voters of the city of Watsonville in order not to cause a standalone special election. We were told at our initial meeting on July 2013 with Ms. Flores, the Watsonville City Clerk, that this measure would appear on the June 2014 election ballot, and this was reiterated again by Ms. Flores at our December 2013 meeting. Our consistent intention from the start of the committee was to have the naming public places or property initiatives placed on the June 2014 ballot. We have agreed on numerous occasions that the city of Watsonville place our initiative on the next election for the city of Watsonville that is to be held in June 2014. We request the Watsonville City Council place the naming of public places or property initiative on the June 2014 ballot." Thank you.
Thank you.
My version is going to be en español. Buenas noches, Alcaldesa, señora. Let me get the right name. Karina Cervantes de Alejo.
That's Karina Cervantes.
You're not Alejo? Oh, okay. Estimado Consilio Municipal, como los principantes proponientes de la iniciativa nombrada de lugares públicos, yo, Carlos Rico, Jerry Martin, and Aurora Parker, miembros del comité Let the People Vote, solicitamos que esta iniciativa sea colocada en la boleta electoral del mes de junio del 2014. La recolección de firmas para esta iniciativa fue suspendida por el comité Let the People Vote antes de alcanzar el 15% para no provocar una elección especial independiente. La secretaria municipal nos informó en la junta inicial del mes de julio 2013 que esta medida sería colocada en la boleta electoral del mes de junio 2014, y eso mismo fue repetido una vez más por la secretaria municipal en la junta del mes de diciembre 2013. Ha sido el plan de este comité desde el principio que esta iniciativa de nombramiento de lugares públicos, no calles públicos, fuera colocada en la boleta electoral del mes de junio de 2014. El comité ha estado de acuerdo en varias ocasiones para esta iniciativa se colocara en la siguiente elección de la ciudad de Watsonville que se llevaría a cabo el mes de junio 2014. Gracias, he dicho.
Y su nombre por favor.
Mi nombre es Carlos Felipe Rico.
Gracias.
Soy residente de Watsonville, nacido aquí, tengo 73 años, y esto se me hace que es historia lo que estamos haciendo ahorita.
And we'll wait a few minutes just for translation.
I will speak for Mrs. Parker also.
They want to translate first.
Yeah, well, we're going to translate. It just takes a minute to bring up all the transcripts. We can't hear you, Mr. Landevary. Okay, well, go ahead and proceed with your comments, and we'll come back.
I would just like, I would just like to say that for me, it was a huge pleasure gathering signatures. And for whatever badgering there was, it created a lot of great conversations about the running of our city. And I would just like to say that Carlos Rico, I'm going to tell his story, he was the one collecting signatures when he was in the hospital. And Aurora Parker pushed her walker down the street as we went, as we went, and we had a great time doing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to make one more comment. You know, I wasn't paid a penny to do this. I'm a resident of Watsonville, born native here, born at home, not in the hospital. And it's not what you know, it's who you know. Thank you.
Are you ready, Mr. Landevary? We can try the technology again.
It's not working.
Okay, stay behind. Please continue.
My name is Kathy Perez, and I live in District Six. From the very beginning, it was the intention of our group, Let the People Vote, to avoid spending taxpayer money on another costly and unnecessary standalone special election. Believing that June 2014 was a regular municipal election, we deliberately stopped short of gathering the 15% of signatures required in order to avoid forcing such an election. Additionally, at no time did we lead registered voters to expect that our naming measure would be placed on the general municipal election ballot in November 2014. To the best of our knowledge, every person who signed our petition was fully informed of our plan to have our measure placed on the June 2014 ballot. I know city council members know the city charter backwards and forwards, and I looked up the definition of special election myself. And I won't bore you with the definition because I know you already know what that is. But if it is the intention of the city council to hold a special municipal election in June 2014 for a possible public safety revenue measure like Agenda Item 8.2, we respectfully request that our naming measure be placed on the June 2014 ballot as well since, quote, "there would be no extra cost to the city anyway," end quote, as stated in the city clerk's staff report. If the council were to decide not to put a proposal or any other ballot measure on the June 2014 ballot, of course, we would be more than happy to accept having our naming measure placed on the November 2014 ballot instead. Of course, this evening, you could also vote to adopt, just as it is, and save us all a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Dan Hernandez, and I'm also former Parks and Rec Commissioner for two different areas. And I can tell you, it's about time something like this has come around. Because I tried through Parks and Rec to try to name a park that all it had on it was just Veterans Park. Does anyone know where that's at? Does anyone know that rock that's on there that is maybe one-fifth the size of what it was? There was a, there was a big accident, crashed in, broke it. Well, you know what? We both disrespected that area far enough. And one of the things I wanted to do is name that park Victor Gonzalez. And you know why? Because this is the 21st century. These are new days. These are young kids that have given up their lives so you can be up there. That's why it should be named after him. And I tried my damnedest. But you know what? It was an uphill battle because there was just no damn interest. Well, you all better get interested now because voting time is going to come around. I'd rather have you pass this thing tonight, start mending some fences, and some of you getting off your duffs and doing the right thing for this community. You use this office of mayorship to skip onto other places. You know what? I lived here, just like Cardinals, all my life. And up to this time, the council, Lowell, you want to talk your crap? Well, what about the grand jury? Jesus Christ, my man. Don't throw rocks in your own glass house. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I like to commit to Lowell Hurst, open a big mouth, so I kind of encourage me to get up here with a little nerve. Lowell, I want to tell you something. You know, I don't appreciate your comments. A lot of us got involved in this because we want to change. I've been here since '41. I've seen this city change a lot. Some of it we don't like, some we do. But when the council member mouths off to the public, and I respect, he used to be a mayor, I respect council member because he was, trust me, he was a teacher at one time. But when he says, you know, that they were paid... But when he says, you know, that they were petition, you know, we circulated petitions. I did too. I was asked to volunteer, and Lowell, I didn't get a penny. So I just want to inform you that a lot of us did it because we thought it was the right thing to do. And I don't really like you going, and during the petition signers, at one time, you went to people in front of a shopping center and told them that shouldn't be doing this. And you went into the store and talked to the manager. He told you what he thought. He was told you he had that permission. Why did you do that? I don't understand. But a council member, none of us, none of, on the board did it, except you. Why did you pick on those people that day? And that's a common, a lot of people saw that, and they know you did it, Lowell. I resent that. So that's why I'm here, Lowell. That's why I got up here to tell you I disagree with what you said. Thank you.
Is there other members of the public wishing to address us on this issue now on the agenda?
Thank you very much. My name is Pedro Castillo. I live in District 4. Mayor Cervantes, members of the city council. I'd like to first, real quickly, compliment the city clerk for a tremendous staff report. I learned a lot by just reading your staff report. So thank you very much. Three points I'd like to make to Let the People Vote. We currently have a democratic process, and we currently have, if someone wants to name a park, a street, or what have you, and this was, as pointed out by the, by staff, it goes to the Parks and Recreation Commission. They'll accept names and they'll debate it, and then they'll make their recommendation to the city council. This is something that was implemented by the city council in 1974, way, way before many of us possibly were here. And as the staff report points out, there's only one time where it got to be conflicted and it got to be very complicated. And this is the naming of the youth center. I know this very well because I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And there were various recommendations. One was to name it Waldo Rodriguez, one was to name it Jean Huleris, and one was to name it for Cesar Chavez. And as a result of the compromise, and as a result of former Mayor Todd McFerrin, he stated, and I think Lowell, you were on the city council at that time.
What?
Let's name it for Jean Huleris and Waldo Rodriguez. This is in the early 1990s, and that's what we have today. So there's a process. By adopting this Let the People Vote, you eliminate the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I really would like to have advice from the Parks and Recreation Commission on this. Second thing is the cost. We're going to have an item that comes afterwards about how we need to possibly raise a sales tax so we can afford to hire new police officers, new fire people. Is this going to cost us any worse, from $28,000 to $40,000? Is it going to cost more? We're in a real pinch here in the city, and I think that that's one thing. And then very lastly, something that Lowell brought out and has been criticized, I recognize that a number of the people from this community passed the petitions, had people sign it. But it's still not clear to us. There was an article in The Sentinel a few weeks ago by a reporter, she's sitting back there, about money that was funneled through a group in Capitola, money that came from the ex-chair of the Republican Party who happens to live in Capitola and Aptos. That's not really clear. Who hired professionals to get signature? Who went door-to-door, who sat at shopping centers? We need to find out more about exactly who did this. These are people from outside of the city of Watsonville trying to tell us as citizens and residents just what is best for our community. I don't have any recommendations of what for you to do, but I just wanted to raise some of these items. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public wishing to address us on this issue?
Mi nombre es Yolanda Deana, y yo soy una de las proponentes también de esas tres iniciativas. Y al escuchar esta noche a cada uno, todos, lo importante de eso es que todos estamos dando nuestra opinión. Yo quisiera invitarlos, que nos juntemos y trabajemos juntos. Cuando yo veo a las personas, Carlos Rico, Ria Dejar, Aurora Parker, look at them. Ellos han estado aquí toda su vida. They're there, volunteering. They believe on these changes. Not only a group of people, people like them, we should really have a lot of respect for them. They're the ones that have lived here all their lives, and they want those changes. And not just them, a lot of people in Watsonville. I heard when they were saying, city clerk, that this was implemented in 1974. If you look at Watsonville 1974, is it the same as it is right now? Totally different. I wasn't even here in 1974. Was in Mexico. I used to come when I was five years old to visit relatives. I remember La Placita. I have a picture there when I was five years old. Went back to Mexico. But that's one thing that you need to consider too. Things change. And the system that we have right now, it needs change. It needs new input. And when the people from Watsonville are here saying, "We want to be part of the process", why do we deny them for that? I invite every one of you, work with us, represent your community, hear them what they're saying to all of us. I just want to say thank you to all, and let's become a community instead of divided. There's three issues. No money involved, just the vote, the voice of the people from Watsonville. That's what it is. We want to participate. We want to name the places. We want to choose our representatives. I don't think that's too much to ask. Please listen to the people, and let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dr. Lupita Rivas, and I'm District 7, Board Member, Parro Valley Unified School District. And I agree with some people that they want democracy, they want a chance for people to vote. But my biggest concern is that who's going to vote? We have a lot of people in our area that are disenfranchised, they don't always come out to vote. We see what happens in the elections. Very few people come out to vote. When we have even a big election, we're lucky we can get, you know, 40, 50%. There are a lot of people out there that are still working on their citizenship. You know, they understand the process, but they don't always come out to vote. So my biggest concern is, you're putting it up for a vote, but who is actually going to vote for that measure? The people that have more knowledge? The people that have been here in a long time? The people that are wealthy? The people that are more aware of the democratic process? A lot of our people are not aware of it, or do they practice that process? Because most of the time, they're so busy working two jobs that they don't come out to vote. So my biggest concern is, who is going to be in the democratic process? The rich? The more educated? The more powerful? The more knowledgeable? Or is it everybody? And I don't think everybody's going to come out to vote. At least with the process we've had in the past, we've had open sessions, anybody that speaks whatever language they want to speak can come out and state their opinion. But with the voting, you have to be able to go to a voting place, put your vote in, and that's how you get counted. So I really would prefer that we leave the process the way it is instead of going to a voting process. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Ari Parker. I'm a teacher in the Parro Valley Unified School District and a resident of Watsonville. I'm a little concerned that a trustee, who's technically my boss, came up here and said, "Democracy is not important." Because, hey, who's going to vote? And what are they going to say? And I have to say that people will vote, the people that are concerned. And I talk to everybody out there who's of every generation, of all different backgrounds. And the one thing that they had, when we were getting these petition signatures, had in common, was the minute that they heard, and I don't want you to take this personally, that it was not going to be your decision anymore as a council to name something, it was going to be their decision, is the minute they wanted to sign that paper as fast as they could. And so that's, those are the people that are going to vote. And that's as a teacher, those are the people that I hope grow up, the kids, their children grow up, and they vote, and they're great members of this community. And I've been teaching in this community for about 30 years, and my mother has lived here her entire life, with a short stint in France when my dad was in the army. But still, Let the People Vote, and I think it's important because it includes all people, all the people in Watsonville. Thank you.
I'm sorry, you already spoke.
Just came to get my cane, is that okay?
Okay, perfectly fine. And I'm just going to ask everyone to be respectful, both those of us up here as council members, those of you down in the audience. You know, if we're going to have a civic debate, let's do that and be respectful of each other.
Very good, very good, Mayor. Robert Chakanaka, longtime resident of the area, have lived in the city of Watsonville. First came to Tortilla Flats in 1970, not by choice but by parental guidance. And I think you have a process, it's a process that's been working since 1974 and before. It's very democratic. It moves. I think Professor Castillo laid it out. I don't think we need any much more discussion. I find it a little ironic that some of the past is coming back and that people have forgotten what Watsonville was just a short 25 years ago. And maybe we need to reexamine our history and know where we've been before we know where we're going. It's clear to me that the democratic process that's in place works, and I'm just shocked that people want to vote on naming things. I mean, what names do we have here now? Or will that give us the opportunity to buy and pay for the naming of products by corporations that will spend money to name things after things so we can have the city hall called Comcast City Hall, or whatever cable company runs the city of Watsonville's cable service? That's a great idea, just grand. And the people can vote that up or vote that down and be paid for. I find a lot of irony here. You know, the whole subject of the mayorship, we've had this discussion before. We know that the current city council's here because of a court case. The previous city council and the previous folks behind me didn't quite like that, but that's not the way democracy works, and that's not the way this country operates. So it's a little bit of a history lesson that people need to remember and retain. I've said more than my share tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public wishing to address us on this agenda item? See you then. I will return it to council for discussion. Councilmember Hurst.
Well, thank you. And I'll lead off with this. You know, I think it's pretty interesting, we've touched such a sensitive nerve regarding the paid petition gatherers and the money that has flowed from unknown sources to unknown sources regarding all this petition gathering. You know, it's also interesting that we're, when we look at the 1974 resolution, the names that were on that resolution, names like Palm Tag, and Clark, and McNeil, and Richards, and Santi, and Sauer, and Johnson, historic names in Watsonville. And so what's really going on here? I think it's pretty clear that, you know, this is going to be a wonderful opportunity for paid political consultants, folks that can come into the community and say, "Hey, I've got a name for you, and let's put $10,000 behind that campaign, and let's rename, let's rename a park, or let's rename a building, or let's find our identity with some paid petitioners' proposal." So I think we're replacing a democratic process with kind of a paid, an opportunity for people to profit out of it. And I don't think that's quite what democracy had in mind.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to take a point of privilege here and just move staff's recommendation in the sense that we bring this ordinance to the voters in the June election. Second by Dr. Billisich. And discussion on the motion, I'll go ahead and open up with a few comments. You know, democracy has various definitions, and for myself, it's always been about, you know, serving the interest of the electorate, but the larger public interest as well. One of you mentioned, you know, the changing demographics of this city. We are a city that has a large amount of young people living in this community, and they are not yet eligible to vote. We also have a large number in this community that is still, you know, navigating through the citizenship process, the naturalization process, and so yet not eligible to vote. The current process that we have in place, the process and procedure that we have in place, allows multiple points for public input that does not require citizenship. And it doesn't cost the voters any money. I don't have a particular position about this, but I do have a position about being more accessible, not just to registered voters, but to other community members as well. And another definition of democracy, it's not just a counting up of votes, it is also a counting up of actions. And so to count up some of the actions, some of the changes that this proposal is putting forward, is to taking away public input for those folks that are not yet eligible to vote. It is also going to end up costing voters money to have this on the ballot each and every single time. The other thing it is going to do that wasn't as clear and wasn't as communicated as clearly prior to seeing this report, is that it's also going to take away the ability for other residents in the community to approach the public commission, which is, I mean, the Parks and Recreation Commission, which is the current process, to recommend a naming of a public city-owned facility. What's happening now is that it's getting turned over. Only council members are going to have the opportunity to present and put something forward on the ballot for voters to vote on. And so for me, it just doesn't seem to sort of make any sense, what this is proposing, especially if the last discussion that we've had on naming of a park has been in the 90s. And it really is a moot point because I don't see the tax base coming forward to help build additional facilities and additional parks. And so that is what I meant. I respected the process. I didn't comment very much on it. I was criticized for that. But I respect the process of being able to petition your government, and I don't want to influence that. But now that it's before us, these are going to be the changes that have significant impact and consequences immediately for some of the voters and those not yet eligible to vote, including a lot of the young people in our community that can currently have a say in the naming of public places. Councilmember Dodge.
Thank you, Mayor, for actually speaking a lot of sense on some of the things that are faced in front of us. I too believe in the Second Amendment and the petition process. That's why I didn't comment throughout the process too much myself. I believe that the people have the right to be able to do that. I just think that there was a lot of, for, and I really get tired of times, and this will probably cost me later on, my grandchildren, the sixth generation of my family, be born in this county, here, here in Watsonville. So it's not necessarily I lived here all my life is a requirement to be able to, you know, have some sort of higher opinion than others. That being said, I really think that what is missing from here is, while everybody has good intentions, and I do believe that there were good intentions, this initiative is a reactionary effort from a former mayor's support of Dolores Huerta, who has been, who was honored by the President of the United States with the Medal of Freedom. This is, I find, that went through the Parks and Recre, that went through the process that was established, and actually, it was voted on and passed by the Parks and Recreation Commission and never made it to the city council, it was withdrawn. This issue where we haven't even had a park that's been named since the 1990s, I do see the potential, and I don't think it's outrageous to be able to look at the potential. potential for, for private business to be able to influence campaigns, to be able to name certain things in the city. I think that that, that happens all the times in other cities. And we would be the only city in the state of California that changed the process that's open to all other cities, particularly general law cities. So I, I just, while I commend people for participating in democracy, I have to disagree with you, Rick. I've got elected by 50% of my, my community, my district when I ran for city council. Edwarde was also a candidate that ran. The most appointees that have come, oh, that's another subject. But I, I believe that democracy works by the knocking on doors that I've had to do. It seems like some, you know, I, I am, I believe that these initiatives don't necessarily face the challenges that are faced in front of the city right now. They're, they're, they're well-intended, I'm sure. But when you have, when you don't do the necessary paperwork and you raise money to get paid gathered signature, the question becomes which, where's the money coming from? Who finances that? And without the proper signatures or playing by the rules that others have to play, then those questions aren't necessarily answered. And it's been, it's, we see pay signature gathers and they identify themselves as paid signature gathers. There's a process to be able to do that. So while I certainly have to wonder about those kinds of things, who's influencing money being spent in our community to be able to change certain policies and procedures that don't necessarily require changing? I think it sounds good when you tell people we want to be able to participate in the process. That's what that microphone's for. And I'm actually glad to see everybody being utilizing it lately. And as long as I've been sitting here the last couple of years, it gets utilized a lot. So I, I, I think that these initiatives, it's also, you know, to say that it's not going to cost any money, there's no price on democracy. You know, everything costs money, even if it's a factor of two to $3 at, at 15,000 vote, registered voters, that's still a 40, you know, $40,000, you know, in a cost of election. So I, I think that, you know, some of those things, while I haven't commented on them because the time and the place wasn't commented, I didn't want my marks, remarks to be misconstrued either. So I waited for this occasion to be able to talk in a public forum. And I, I think there's a lot of questions out there pertaining to those things. And I believe they'll surface at some particular point. But that's the issue that's faced in front of us this evening about moving forward on this. And I do believe that that's what we're going to be voting on this evening.
Yeah, so there is a motion on the floor if last point of discussion. Dr. Bilicic.
I just wanted to say that people have followed the democratic process. They've gone out and gathered signatures. And now they're, they've turned it in, it's been certified. And here we are, we're going to have an election. So however it turns out, there was a process followed, signatures were verified, and then, as they say, let the people vote. Thank you.
I too concur with the, the attitude of we are representing our community and this is what our community has made the advisement of. And it's up to the voters to make a final determination of what those petitions signed so that they can see it put on there. And if those are really passionate about it, they need to show up and do their vote. There are more than just opportunities to have to show up at the poll to vote. You could absentee ballot, there's a lot of flexibility there. There's also the opportunity, when it comes to council, putting in the name that goes on that ballot, it still allows the public process for the comments to be made for those suggestions that are going to be brought from the council onto the ballot for our voters. So there is still a due process involved with this process of bringing this to our recipients.
Councilmember Hearst, last comment.
Well, thank you very much. You know, I think that we need to be real clear that this is a reactionary effort. It's kind of a Trojan horse that's been rolled into the room in, in many respects. So the, the voters, and I'm going to support the motion here because I think we do need to dispense with this, but I think that we, the petitioners and everybody else need to be quite conscious of what is going to evolve in the future. And sometimes you do get what you wish for. And so, but changing the, the, the name on places is not going to be changing the real effects on the community. And changing the council is not going to have that much effect on the real issues of the community of poverty, unemployment, issues of, of crime and public safety that just are persistent and don't go away. And so we'll see how it goes and, and let's move forward with it. But this is going to cost us, not maybe now so much, but later on, there's going to be a cost. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead with the roll call vote. There's a motion on the floor. Staff's recommendation that we move the ordinance for the June election.
Mayor, does that include number one also, accept the city clerk certificate?
Yes, for verification of the signatures.
Yerlisi?
Yes.
Cavman Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Thank you all very much for your comments and for being respectful of each other and one another. Let's go ahead and move on to item 8.2. We have the results of a voter survey on a possible public safety revenue measure. And I do believe we have an oral report on the survey reports by Godby and also TBWB.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you very much for having us. Jared Boygan with TBWB Strategies. We've been working closely with the city as well as the mayor's committee on, I'm not sure of the exact formal name of the committee, on revenue.
I believe it's the Oversight, Revenue Oversight Measure Committee.
Revenue Oversight Measure Committee.
Yes.
Which, as a side note, I find to be very broad and balanced. It's an excellent committee. It was wisely put together. It's had good input. So we've been with that committee assessing various options, as I know the committee was charged with, for tackling the problem of adequate revenue for public safety, response times for police, fire, paramedic, efforts that the departments need to keep Watsonville safe. And after several discussions with the committee, we settled on preferred course of action, at least for the purposes of testing in a voter opinion survey of a potential special half-cent sales tax to be split between police and fire slash paramedic. This would be a special tax, not a general use tax, that would be limited only to specific uses as outlined in the ballot resolution. And so we created a voter survey in order to test how your voters would respond to this kind of proposal. Brian Godby from Godby Research is going to present the results of that voter survey tonight to you all. And then I'll talk again briefly at the end about what some next steps are. Also want to point out that our committee chair obviously is, is here and, you know, may have some comments for you all regarding the process after we finish our presentation.
Thank you, Jared. Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Brian Godby from Godby Research. I'm pleased to be here this evening to talk to you about the results of the survey that Jared just referenced. And so without any further ado, I will jump into the results. As you know, this was a telephone survey. Our universe was the likely November 2014 voters in Watsonville. But we also had a substantial oversample, is what we call it, of June 2014 voters. And the purpose of that is so we can look at both election environments to see where the best opportunity lies. We were in the field from December 3rd through December 14th. The average interview was 18 minutes long, fairly typical for this type of survey research. The sample size, as I was alluding to earlier, was basically November 2014 likely voters. That was 329 completed interviews. And that larger oversample of June was 277. That resulted in error rates of 3.5% plus or minus for November and plus or minus 3.57 for the June data that you'll see in a moment. And I will try to reference when we're talking about June or November in the various data that we're going to look at. Wrong direction. Okay, so we began the survey with what we call a climate section. It has nothing to do with the weather, but it is what is the climate with respect to a revenue measure of this sort. The first question is, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the city's efforts to provide services? And you can see here the aggregated data, we not only asked satisfied, dissatisfied, but drilled down to look at very satisfied and somewhat satisfied. When we analyze this to find out what that climate is, we aggregate the satisfied and the dissatisfied together on each side and then create a ratio. Here you see we have 73% satisfied versus 20% in round numbers dissatisfied. That gives us the 3.7 to 1 ratio of positive to negative. The lowest that we have been successful or seen cities be successful passing a revenue measure is with a ratio of about 2.0 to 1. So you're above that, so that's a good place to be. The next question asked people in a similar fashion, are you, do you have a favorable or unfavorable opinion of the city's efforts to manage taxpayer and public funds? The analysis here is much the same. We aggregate the favorable and the unfavorable. And so we have 47% in round numbers to 35% unfavorable. And when we look at a ratio, it's a 3.1 to 1 ratio of that favorable to unfavorable. Again, the lowest we've seen a community be successful with a revenue measure is with a .9 to 1 ratio. So again, you're higher than that and that's a good place to be. Yeah. It's also very typical, what Jared's alluding to, it's typical for the funding question, the second question, and I won't go back because I'm having a hard time with the mouse, to be lower than the, the first question, the satisfaction with services. So that's pretty typical. And the don't know that we saw there, 18% is fairly typical as well. In fact, we often see much higher don't knows. So in both cases, you're in pretty good shape. So that helped us set the stage for moving into our next question, which is what we call an uninformed ballot test. And here we read the respondents, the 75-word or thereabout statement that you see on the right-hand side of the slide in the box. The reason I say 75 words is that's what you're limited to on the actual ballot. And so we have to work within those constraints and try to do the best job characterizing what it is that, that you'd like to do. We then say, would you vote yes or no? After that, we drill down a second step and say, is that definitely yes or probably yes? Same thing on the negative side. And so you see here both the drill down as well as the aggregate. And it is correct to aggregate the yes, no in this context to decide whether a measure like this is feasible. As you can see in the June election universe, we get 70.7 or 71% in round numbers yes. And in November, we're at 72.2. Those are virtually the same from a statistical perspective, so we don't really see a difference. But that's a great place to start. For a special tax that requires two-thirds, we've exceeded that threshold and all they know about it is the 75 words that we see here. We haven't talked in any more detail about what the measure might entail. Obviously, that can't be in the 75 words because it just won't fit, but this is a great place to begin. The next question that follows it up does actually what I was alluding to, it drills down into more of the details of the measure. And the way we ask this question is we read each of the items that you see here in a random order and then ask people, given that information, that we would use the money to maintain fire and paramedic emergency response times, for example, would you be more or less likely to support the measure? We then drill down an extra step and say, is that much more or somewhat more or more likely or less likely? And so we have a four-point scale, of which you see two of those points across the bottom here because everything is very positive. Once we're done with all the data collection, we then take it out of that easily understandable context and put it into numbers that we like to use because it's easier to prioritize these various things that you might spend the money on. And that's the scale that you see here. A much more likely response gets a 2, a somewhat more likely response gets a 1, a no effect is a 0, a somewhat less likely response, a minus 1, and a much less likely response, a minus 2. The interesting thing overall here is that everything on this list that you see is positive. The lowest item at our .72 ranking equates to 63% of the people at least somewhat more likely to support the measure. If we look at the tier one, and that's a group of things that are statistically about the same, there's a numeric difference and it's useful to show that, but statistically, tier one is about the same, statistically, tier two is about the same, and the same thing for tier three. For tier one, the level of support ranges from 1.36 on our scale for maintained fire and paramedic emergency response times, which equates to 85% of the voters at least somewhat more likely to support the measure. That is very, very high. I don't think Jared and I see those sorts of numbers, I can't, at all. Last time that it came close to this was probably in your city neighbors to the northeast, I guess that is in Salinas, but nowhere else in California. So there's a lot of support for that. At the bottom of this tier, hire more police officers, that's at least 77% somewhat more likely to support the measure, well over the two-thirds requirement for this kind of measure that we're talking about. So this top tier is very important to voters and it includes the items I read, as well as improving police and emergency response times, replacing inadequate outdated lifesaving equipment, maintaining anti-gang youth violence prevention efforts, upgrading equipment and technology to solve crimes, and increasing neighborhood police patrols. That's a whole lot to say in one breath and it's a whole lot to work with. And again, those numbers are very, very good. The next question is, or question said is even more of an eye chart, and I apologize for that, but everything was really good, so we wanted to get it all on one page. This is a list of supporting statements. So it's not just how we're going to spend the money, but it's what are the benefits of that. There, it's a little more argumentative. We'll come to the negative side of this equation a little bit later. But this is the positive side. And what we've done here is the same sort of methodology for survey implementation purposes, there's no less likely side of this equation. So these scores don't match apples to apples with the previous scores. They are necessarily a little higher, but they serve the same purpose. They allow us to prioritize these items and see what's most important to the voters. Everything on this list is in tier one. So they are basically statistically the same. Again, there's a numeric difference and that's useful for, for making priorities. At the top of this list, that 1.4, of which there are two of them, since 1983, the population has tripled and calls for help have gone up 700% and expanded programs to identify downtown drug and gang houses. Those equate to 79% of the voters at least somewhat more likely to support the measure. Again, an outstanding positive score. At the bottom of this list, the state has taken more than $22 million from Watsonville and that's the reason we need this measure. That's at least 73% more likely to support the measure. And I won't read this list because it's really long and we'll be here all night. But there's a lot of stuff in here that's above 73%, at least somewhat more likely to support the measure, when you hear each one of those items, and as high as 79%. That's a great, great numbers. I even wrote in my notes, great, in all capital letters with an exclamation mark. I never do that. I'm a numbers guy, I'm not a real enthusiastic, jump up and down, but when I see these kinds of numbers, I can't help but say that. The next question went back to our initial ballot test because we've given people a lot more information now and we want to see what happened to their support. Did it go up or did it go down? We would expect it to have gone up because we've just talked about what we're going to spend the money on and the positives. Again, we'll come to the negatives in a moment. And what we see basically for both the June and November environment is a 6% increase in the level of support, which is great. Sometimes we see 1 or 2%, but 6% when we're talking about the two-thirds level or above to start with is quite encouraging. two-thirds level or above to start with, is quite encouraging. Next, we then go back to that same sort of argumentative format. In this case, we're looking at the opposition statement, so it's not just looking at the positive, but we want to look at both sides of the equation. And we ask a variety of negative items. There's always a relationship that we need to strike that matches what happens in the real world between the positives and negatives, and so that's why this list is a little bit shorter. We're, we're doing that and simulating the real world. The question is asked the same way, and the numbers are calculated the same way, but we don't put a minus sign in front of anything to make it seem bad. So the higher it is, the worse it is for the measure. At the top of this list, the city council is responsible for the current problems. It's a fairly typical trust in gut, local government question that we ask everywhere. That's at the top of this list at point seven two. That equates to forty-three percent, at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure. And that's above the one-third necessary to defeat a measure. So we do have to be concerned about that. But I'll tell you, I, I've got another presentation in a school district next week where this number is one point zero, so much higher. So that's, while it's something we should be concerned with and be prepared to address, I don't think it's a, um, a game ender by any stretch of the imagination. Next is another item that's fairly typical that we ask up and down the state is we wouldn't need this money if salaries and pensions weren't out of control. That's of course been a statewide debate. That point six six equates to forty-one percent, at least somewhat more likely. And then we have the economic recovery is fragile, obvious issue that, again, is tested everywhere we do these kinds of surveys. Sales tax will be among the highest in Santa Cruz County, and increasing the sales tax will drive shoppers out of Watsonville. So those are things that we need to be aware of. What happens next? We've been asking all of these items somewhat in isolation. We ask them to rate features and positives and negatives on their own merit. And then we come to the final test, which is where we ask them to synthesize all this together. Okay, got to put it all together, figure out where you come down one way or the other. And as you can see here, in June, we're basically at seventy percent in round numbers, and in November, we're at seventy-three percent. That's a decline from the interim test. It's just a little bit below the first test for June and just a little bit above the first test for November. Statistically speaking, there's no difference between the first test, second test, or between June and November. And since we are over the two-thirds threshold by three percent, that's again, a very good indication of the measure's likely success. So to summarize what we've seen, we think that the survey reveals a strong base of voter support for a half-cent special sales tax, and Jared and I believe that the city should consider placing a measure on the June two thousand fourteen ballot. Key features of the measure would include some of the things that we've seen in the previous slides, maintaining fire and paramedic emergency response times, improving police emergency response times, replacing inadequate life-saving equipment, maintaining the anti-gang and, and youth violence prevention efforts, upgrading equipment and technology to solve crimes, increasing neighborhood police patrols, hiring more police officers, hiring more firefighters, and replacing firefighter decontamination areas and equipment. The survey results also suggest that, as I said, that you begin the necessary steps to put a measure on the ballot in June, and that you continue community outreach that the committee Jared has mentioned earlier, has been working on as a public information effort to explain the city's public safety needs. At this point, I'll turn it back to my colleague.
One more slide? Thanks Ezekiel. Thank you, Brian. So I have only one very brief slide here, which is what next steps would be. Clearly, the result of the survey shows that such a measure is viable. And so the next step would be to finalize an expenditure plan, since this is a special funding measure, where the uses, the revenue could only be used for the specific purposes that are outlined in the actual measure that you've submitted to voters. Got to put enough care and thought into the expenditure plan that it can meet the needs that the departments have and that you all have as a council, and then obviously meets the priorities, as Brian outlined, that the voters have. So putting together the correct expenditure plan is pretty critical. This is not a measure where in future years, council could move money in and out and around to different programs. So the right expenditure plan becomes crucial. We do think public outreach obviously is critically important. You do have a relatively well-attended city council meeting, that is unquestionably true, but there are lots and lots of voters in town who don't have the opportunity to participate in meetings like this, and they're not as aware of what's happening. And so we strongly encourage our clients in, in City of Watsonville in this case, to go out, make sure people understand what it is you're thinking about. Let's do some extended public outreach. And as a piece of that, an informational mailer we recommend is something we do frequently in environments like this. We would do it in two languages and send it out everywhere so that people really do understand what it is that the council's considering, why they're considering it, what the needs of the departments and the staff are, the type of measure you're considering. There'd be a narrow measure with restricted use, and give them an opportunity to give feedback, provide an email address, phone number, a place where they can send some comments, send some thoughts, you know, so that you have a chance to hear from them a little bit prior to making a final commitment regarding a measure. If, as the city clerk eloquently explained earlier, if we want to be on the June election, you would have to take action prior to March seventh, so you're not being asked tonight to put a measure on the ballot. You would have, you know, time, anytime before March seventh to take that action for a June election. We do think that these poll results show that that's viable in June according to the voter survey. The one caveat I would say for June is that one thing that's always a factor in these kinds of elections is the type of distraction that is around it. And if there's a lot of yes versus no conversation in the community, sometimes that can be a little bit distracting for a two-thirds tax measure. So you do want to make sure as you continue with your community outreach prior to your March seven decision deadline, that you feel good about the broad set of community consensus. One thing about two-thirds measures like this, when even with strong polling numbers, is that people who disagree on other issues often need to still unite around issues like this. And even though there's always a minimum number of people in any community, and Watsonville's no different, who simply, for reasons of personal household income or ideology, will never vote yes on a tax measure, it, it is possible, but needs unity among everybody else to get all the way up to that two-thirds level to pass a tax. And so if there's some confusion, distraction, competition, and there is not that unity to get to two-thirds, sometimes that's not the right election environment. Typically, we see that November environments are more distracting than June primary environments because that's when council elections naturally happen. Yeah, you have state and federal issues at stake. In this particular circumstance, it looks like you have some interesting issues headed to the ballot in June. And so I think before the council commits on March seventh, probably want to have a realistic assessment of how controversial you feel like some of those measures are going to be when they finally get to voters. Maybe they won't be. But if they are, will some of that controversy have an impact on how voters will receive this measure? So I do think that that's something you absolutely want to consider prior to making a final decision on March seventh. With that, Ms. Vargas, I don't know if you wanted to give you words?
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. I do believe it's in your staff support that actually speaks to who the members of my committee actually is. Is it, is it at all on a slide that can be put up for the public to see by chance?
No.
I just kind of thought that it possibly was when we saw it the other day.
So we have a copy of them.
Yeah.
There.
I think this is, speaks some huge volume. These, these folks. It's pretty accurate, actually. You may, your list may have narrowed down from the, the start, but...
Our list just includes the ones that were present at the last meeting.
Okay. Well, even, even that group is, you know, mainly, you, you can say John Martinelli, Bill Hanson, Gary Manfree. You, you've got some, some really good people sitting at the table that, that we've all been mulling over everything since about the first week of June, and we've had several meetings, very detailed thorough meetings, and we've, we've been pretty hard on Carlos and Ezekiel as far as bringing us back information and trying to figure out all the different ways of, of going about a potential solution. This is, this is where we've come to. Foundationally, we all unanimously agreed that this is the direction that we need to go in. You, you need to have a safe and healthy community that we live in. I don't think anybody wants to ever raise taxes, and I certainly don't enjoy my face being the face recommending that. However, I thoroughly, to my core, as well as the folks that are on my committee, believe in what it stands for and where the special tax monies is going to go. And with that being said, I don't think a half a percent is, I, I realize that that would be putting us at the height of what's out there. I don't think it's going to be what's going to discourage people from shopping here. I just can't picture somebody jumping in a car and driving to another community to go make a purchase because of a half-cent increase, although that half-cent is going to be extremely crucial to police and fire. And the hope is that the increase of the health, safety, response times, and everything that they went through on the slides would actually create an environment that becomes more inviting for growth to occur in a proper fashion and get other businesses in here and have some, you know, some other generators of revenue that can come forward. Mind you, that's not what we are working on. We just can see that that could be the ripple effect. We just definitely know that there is a need when we've been looking over all of the figures that we have. We are just really out of whack in comparison to population, to proper services. And so if you have any questions for me, I can stand by.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. We are going to hear from staff in a little bit, and then we'll have an opportunity for additional questions. So I believe we do have a staff report from chief, oh, okay, Finance Director Vega. I thought we were going to hear from you too, but, okay.
You did that pretty quick.
Yes.
So as you saw on the last slide of the presentation by TBWB, there were some next steps to be taken. And one of those next steps is to conduct some outreach, finalize some of the budget needs for the two departments, police and fire. And tonight, I'm bringing forward to, for your, for your consideration, a couple of recommendations on the staff report. One of them, to direct the staff to come back with a report and a resolution to the city council on the February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen meeting, asking authorization to call for an election for a special public safety tax. And just as a note, this is not part of the action, the red, the red, the red letters, but it is important to note that a special safety sales tax will be used solely for police and fire if the voters decided that this is a measure that they would like to, to pass. In addition to that, the second recommendation I have for you is approving a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with TBWB in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars. And what this money will be used for is to produce flyers, obtain input from the community, do some outreach, and measure whether or not, in addition to the strong numbers that you saw presented earlier tonight, we have some more community input that will support the, the passage of a measure like the one that we're proposing. So that's why we're bringing this content for your consideration as well. So why are we bringing this to you? I'm just going to go into some background information on the financial situation of the city, some of the information that we have been presenting as well to the Revenue Oversight Committee, and also we have presented to a couple of groups actually in the community as well. We had a meeting in District Six and also District One, representatives that presented some of this information. So when you see some of these slides, this is not something that will be new to you. It may be new to some of the community members, but it is something that we have been dealing with for a few years, and that it is the impetus or is the force behind some of the reasons for this measure being presented to you. So, so as part of the background, the city council approved on September twenty-four a contract with Godby and Associates for survey. And the council had a lot of consideration in that meeting, and after the presentation of all the facts, they considered that this was an appropriate way of spending some tax dollars to gauge the interest of the community in supporting such a measure. And as you saw in the report earlier today, it is, it is a positive result of the survey. In addition to that, some of the background information, why are we here today, is also we, we had this projection on revenues and expenditures over the next five years. And as you can see, for the current fiscal year that we're in, fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, we, we are in balance in essence. And the reason why we're in balance is because of the continued concessions that the city and the city employees have agreed upon over the next couple of fiscal years. Those contracts will be up for renewal in fourteen, fifteen, and if those concessions are not renewed, then we will be facing a gap of approximately three million dollars per year over the next three fiscal years. And this is not counting some radical changes that are currently happening at the state level, but I'm not going to go into those details right now. It is just a matter of, this is what the situation was when we presented the budget to you. This is the information you have seen before, and this is the reason why we're here today as well. So as part of the background as well, these are all the different reductions that all the different bargaining groups have taken over the last five years. As a summary, employees have taken a ten percent reduction in salary. Some departments are closed on Fridays, and this has been going on for almost five years, and there have been no salary increases. So that was on the cost side. Even though the city has made a lot of effort on reducing costs and trying to contain the cost and continue to provide valuable services to the community, we continue to see a disparity on the revenue that the city receives when you compare it to other cities around the region. As you can see, the City of Watsonville receives approximately thirty-three million dollars per year in revenue in the general fund compared to the City of Santa Cruz that has approximately the same population number, they say approximately the same number of people, they receive approximately seventy-one million dollars. That's almost double, or a little more than double than what we, what we actually receive in the city and for providing the same level of service. When you compare that to Monterey, Gilroy, and Salinas, the City of Watsonville is the lowest in the total revenue in the general fund. Similarly, when you compare, when you convert those numbers on a per capita basis, when you compare it to the population that we have to serve, you see that the lowest of all of them is the City of Salinas, followed by Watsonville, our city, and then Gilroy, Santa Cruz, and Monterey. So an example that I use typically when I have a couple of community meetings on this is just if you imagine having a family that makes about thirty-three thousand dollars per year compared to a family that makes seventy-one thousand dollars per year, and they have to pay all their bills, and they have the same number of kids, the same responsibilities living around the same area, and when you have to pay your mortgage and your utility bills and all of that, it is more difficult to do it with thirty-three thousand dollars than it is with seventy-one thousand dollars. That's the same, or similar situation that we find ourselves in, in the City of Watsonville, when you compare us to the, our neighbor, the City of Santa Cruz. So the sales tax comparison currently, this, the other cities are eight point seven five in the county, where the City of Watsonville is at eight and a half. If we've had, if we were to put a measure on the ballot and a half-cent measure was approved by the voters, we will be at nine percent, and that will take us above the other cities within the county. And where is the sales tax going right now? The public may ask, or the council members, or anybody else, so what's going on with the sales tax that you currently receive? As you can see, out of all these sales tax that we currently, that currently is assessed and in the purchase within the city limits, you see that most of that is going to the state, six point five percent. There's some going to the, this transit district. The City of Watsonville receives in essence one percent and a couple of other, half a, quarter of a percent for other special taxes. So what we're asking for is half a percent more to be able to provide valuable services if this measure was to be put in the ballot for police and fire services. So as you saw, the survey results were positive, and the likely voters indicate that they would support something like that for a police and fire measure. I'm not going to more, go more into more details. There was a very extensive presentation about this earlier. And this slide was in, in essence, placed into, into this presentation to give an opportunity to the Revenue Oversight Committee to talk about all the different background work that we have done with them, their support for such a measure being placed into the ballot. But that opportunity has already been presented. The chair, Didi Vargas, has made a, an excellent point about all the hard work and dedication that has come from these committee members to review all the financial information of the city. They asked an extensive amount of, for an extensive amount of information, and they were provided with that information. After they received that information, they believe that truly there is a need... After they received that information, they believe that truly there is a need for placing such a ballot measure and recommended that for the City Council for consideration tonight. So they are part of the community, and they have provided that input. But in addition to that, they have also recommended that some of the possible features on the ballot measure will be that the allocations of funds, if this was to be for consideration, that 60% goes to the police services and 40% goes to fire services. They are proposing that there's a possibility of a seven-year sunset date on the ballot language. There's a maintenance of effort requirement, which in essence indicates that if the city is spending a certain level of dollars in the general fund or money in the general fund services, that that same level of service will be maintained even after the passage of a possible measure, so that there is no shifting of responsibilities from the general fund to this new special revenue source. And also the continuation of an oversight committee for the new funding. And in this case, the recommendation will be that the current Revenue Oversight Committee, the names that you saw in the previous slide, will continue to act as the oversight committee for the new funding, at least for the first couple of years, two or three years, and then transition into a process to select or to appoint or recommend changes to that, the composition of that oversight committee, plus other refining features that we will have to be working on when we bring this for your consideration on the 25th of February, if you saw direct the staff to do so. So with all the information that we have gathered, the survey, the recommendation from the Oversight Committee, I think that there is still some need for some more data. And in this case, I think that that's why it is important to do more outreach in the community and do some of the mailers and flyers and meetings with community members. Some of the other organizations that may need to be involved will be the police and fire labor groups, businesses, agricultural businesses, faith-based groups, or elected leaders. So that's the type of outreach that we believe is important. That's what we have in front of you for consideration, the approval of the contract with TBWB to help the city engage the community in such a type of outreach efforts. So again, the recommendation tonight is to direct staff to come back on the February 25th meeting with a staff report recommending a special public sales tax measure to be placed on the ballot and approve the contract with TBWB to help us with the outreach efforts to inform the community about this measure.
If I could just make a couple of clarifying points. The 60-40 split for fire and police came about due to the relative size of the two departments' budgets. So actually, it's...police department is actually 63% of the budget, of the general fund budget, and police, and so...and 37% is fire. So we just rounded it to 60%, 40% due to the relative size of the two departments. And then the other issue is that when we talk about using the funds only for police and fire, in the police expenditure plan, they also included some limited funds for some gang prevention efforts, including the POW program and the Caminos program in their draft expenditure plan, which would also come back on the 25th of the...on February. Thank you.
So now's the opportunity for council members to go ahead and ask them questions. Councilmember Dodge?
Well, real quick, just the last statement that Carlos made, the question pertaining, they submitted it on their plan to come back, so that's not included in the way this is broken down by the budget. I just want some clarity on just on last remark.
Right. The police department and fire department have presented draft expenditure plans to the Revenue Oversight Committee.
Okay.
And then that included and for the police department, some funding for POW and Caminos program, as I remember it. Those draft expenditure plans would also...would come back to the council on the 25th to show the public how the money would be spent, which is...
And those services would be included in that.
In that expenditure plan, yes.
Okay, that's just my question. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, I got a few questions, and because people are going to ask me, and I got to have the answers to this. So why a sunset? Why not a seven or a 10 year?
Yeah, this...
Thank you, council member. I'll take a cut at answering those, and then obviously if my colleagues want to add in. We generally do find that for the first time, when a community engages in a new source of local funding like this, voters respond positively to the idea that it's a sunset so that they have the opportunity to renew or not renew the funding after a period of track record is established. So for example, in your neighbor of Salinas, in 2005, they put in place a half-cent sales tax for libraries and public safety. And then in 2012, the voters overwhelmingly voted to extend it without a further sunset. So they had a period of time when they used the money, they had a track record, they demonstrated to the community that they did a nice job with the money, the community was happy with it, and then the community voted to remove the sunset in 2012. Now that's a perpetual source of income for the city. So it's something that we see as common. It's a pattern and opportunity for the city to kind of develop a track record.
Thank you very much. That helps. And where does the fire department's overtime play into this? I don't know who can answer that, or...
One of the main things that we want to focus on here is staffing. And so if we were to be able to increase our staffing, I think it would follow very shortly that our overtime would go down. So there is a correlation.
That was exactly what I was going to say, because we did...we did kind of speak to that the other day, so.
And I think the consultant answered part of the other question because I was going to ask after a sunset, what do we do? Because I know it's a...be a lot of staff. So thank you for that. And I know every once in a while, people kept asking about another fire station. Could this mean money be used for another fire station?
The minimum amount that a small satellite station would cost would be about 5.3 million. In trying to balance all these needs of staffing, equipment, and service, it doesn't look like there'll be sufficient funds to build and staff another fire station. But we could go in more detail when we come back to you in February, and I could show you our expense plan and how that looks.
Okay, thank you. And how much of this is just used for labor or personnel?
Again, we don't have the final expense plan, but I would say a majority of it is for staffing.
Thank you.
I believe Councilmember Belisic is next.
Thank you. I'd like to ask you, with your size of the sample that you had, the amount of voters and what's the significance of that? How does that play out?
We don't have the slide up, but it was the second one, the method...or the third slide in the presentation. The total likely voters was 8,552 for November 2014. It's somewhat smaller for the June universe. We did 329 interviews, which resulted in an error rate of plus or minus 5.3%.
Is that really significant with 8,000 voters to have 300, given opinion?
Yes. If we did 400, we would reduce that error rate to 4.8 or 4.9%. If we did 600, you'd reduce it to 4%. The thing that is...the advantage that you get by increasing the error rate or increasing the sample size is not reducing the overall error rate, you just make it more easy to segment the pieces of it, but you don't really get a substantial bump in the error rate. Plus, you're not going to be able to do that in a community this size, which is not going to happen. We have to...we virtually called every household in the voter universe.
And I would say the model of polling that Brian used here is very comparable to the style of opinion survey that is used hundreds and hundreds of opinion surveys for this type of measure and for other kinds of political questions throughout the state. So the track record is very solid that when you use this type of statistical sampling, you do get a very good, roughly predictive methodology. So it's a proven methodology. It's used in lots of other places, including Pahrill Valley Unified School District. Their polling was within one or two points of what they ultimately got on Election Day. The City of Salinas recent sales tax measure, the polling was about three points lower actually than what they got on Election Day, so it does have a track record.
And the total cost so far has been how much to do this survey? And then how much 23,000 added to that? So your total cost is going to be what?
What we have is that we entered into a contract initially for the survey itself. I believe it was approximately $25,000 for the survey, and we are adding $23,000 current for the next...for phase two of this process.
And then is there another phase, three, four, or is this it? About 50,000 is what it's going to cost to get this information?
Correct.
Is that what you anticipate?
Approximately 50, correct.
And what I see is that...and you don't think the 9% being the highest in the county, that's not significant? Is that...your results have found that, correct?
Oh, yeah. Let's...9% is not a survey.
We did not think so. We felt that...
When they polled people, though, didn't you poll people?
Yeah.
That survey?
Well, we polled people and told them what the sales tax rate would be increased. We did also say that the sales tax will be among the highest in the county, and that resulted in 42%, at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure. But after they had that piece of information, we came back to the ballot question again, and we were at 70% for supportive.
Another thing with the fire station chief, how come this continues to rise? Every time we talk, it's a little bit more. It'll talk...it's going to cost us a million dollars to fund that fire station with staffing. Now we're talking about building, and we're talking 5.3 million. It's a lot of money. And the fire...for this funding, if we...and you're saying you don't think we can use that because it's not enough. But we had fire impact fees, and that didn't get us a fire station. And yet, we have grown significantly in this community. And District Six and Seven needs that adequate fire protection more. We've talked about that. So I want to see part of this be that solution, too. If this thing goes through, I think we need more protection on the east side of town. It's obvious. I think that we have a transparency problem in our community and a trust issue because of the fire station, the fire truck, water funds, the finance system being not buying police cars. We have issues. So I don't think the public is really supportive of us as a council in some of our decisions. That being said, if you really believe that 9% is what's going to happen and people are going to support it, well, you know, it's a democratic process where once again, let the people vote. So that's...
Any remaining questions? We'll go ahead with Councilmember Hearst, and then Councilmember Dodge.
Yes, I think one of the basic questions that undecided voters will want to have answered is how can they be assured that the money will go where it's indicated?
Well, and that's a good point. The measure that we're discussing, and that I know the committee has recommended, oh, I don't know where Didi went, but...
[laughing]
Sorry, we'll ask you there. What the committee very specifically recommended, we did discuss that quite a bit at our last committee meeting in detail, there's two types of tax revenue measures that a city could pursue. One is a general use measure that would require only a simple majority vote, and that can be for some general purposes as described, but ultimately leaves it up to City Council to allocate as it desires. This is not that model. What this is, is a specific use measure would require 67% or two-thirds voter approval, a little less than 67%, but can only be used for those specific purposes in the expenditure plan that's being developed right now by the departments and by staff. The state could not take this money for any reason under any emergency finding or any other reason that the money is limited, can only be for those purposes, cannot be reallocated or changed by any future council. The only time you could adjust that expenditure plan would be if you went back to the voters, for example, at the end of your sunset period, and you put forward a renewal with maybe a slightly adjusted expenditure plan. So the plan becomes very important. You have to write down what you're going to use, because once it's there, it cannot be moved. That's how the money has to be spent. It's a separate fund, it's a separate audit, it's separate accounting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Hearst, I mean Dodge, I was going to ask you for more questions.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Couple of things. Tell us just really brief...briefly, tell us a little about yourself, how you've been involved. First of all, Salinas is southeast. And second, you were the firm that did for Measure L. Am I correct, the school bond measure that recently passed here? So can you just tell us...you were stating about the numbers being high, and I'm really impressed about the numbers, who went voting for more police and fire, you know? So that being said, can you just tell us a little bit about, again, about how the numbers resonate with you loud and clear, your experience and compared to this measure with Measure L?
Measure L, of course, was a school bond measure, so it's a little bit different, and it only requires a 55% majority. I didn't prepare thinking about what that...those numbers were. My recollection is they were lower than these. These are very high. This requires a two-thirds majority, and you're achieving that. That required a 55% majority, and they, of course, achieved that. In terms of our experience, we've done approaching 400 different successful measures in the state of California for about $35 billion. So we've done a lot of this.
Well, I wanted to say that, so you're on record, so that with...to me, it's a real sounding recommendation when I hear of the Oversight Committee and working in conjunction with you on really coming back with some concrete data on how we can proceed forward with this. So thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Vargas, for all the time and effort you put in.
I had just a couple of questions in regards to the timeline of some of this. So I noticed that the phase two sort of ends on March 31st, but this is coming before consideration on February 25th. And specifically, I have a question regarding some of the qualitative data that you're going out to collect now. So drafting up these informational flyers, mailing them out to residents, and then having the opportunity for them to provide input. So when will all of that sort of happen, and will we have that by the February 25th meeting?
It does have to happen quickly. It is already actually in process. We have actually started doing some of the work, anticipating that council hopefully authorizes it to continue to proceed. But we've been working with staff and the committee through January to prepare draft text and concepts and things of that nature. So we're on the verge of being ready to actually begin producing, you know, those mailers pending, you know, council's action tonight, so that we would be able to get them in the mail the early part of February, and people will be able to receive them and have their chance to respond and give feedback and give input. And then council and staff would have a chance to digest that input before finalizing, you know, the expenditure plans and recommendation.
Okay. And then what's coming before us on the 25th, and this might be a question for our city clerk, it will just be the opportunity to sort of say we're moving forward with this for the June election if we choose to go that route. But in terms of the specific ballot language, is that also something we're approving on the 25th?
It depends. On the 25th, we have the resolution calling the election with all the measures that might be at that time. So there might be another staff report that has information as to the ballot question. And is that the plan, to just bring it on the 25th back with?
Yeah, the plan was to, on the 25th, to actually bring back the ballot language, the expenditure plan, and to call the election.
Okay.
Assuming the council wishes to proceed at that point.
Okay. And then the other question just has to do, will the committee, the Oversight Committee, have an opportunity to meet once again before that 25th, just to be sure that some of the public input is reflected in both what you've articulated is a need to move forward with, and then also integrating some of that additional public input?
Yes. Our plan was to see what you guys wanted to do this evening, and then we were ready to move into action.
Okay, great. Thank you. And final set of questions from Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
I just want to clarify that after a seven-year sunset, since we've already gone through the process of a two-thirds vote, whether removing the sunset means it still needs another two-thirds vote requirement?
It would, yes. The impact of including a sunset means the measure, the revenue ends at seven years after its beginning date unless there's another two-thirds vote of the people extending it or renewing it with, you know, as determined at that time.
Thank you. And I haven't seen anywhere here with regarding an estimated value of the half a percent. What does our number look like for the half a percent?
The estimated value is $2.8 million annually.
Okay. And the...I know that there was also the 2015-16 with a 2.99... And the, I, I know that there was also the, the 2015-16 with a 2.99 deficit, and that was a result of going back, returning from our furlough situation and not really taking in reference of the CalPERS situation that we're looking at on the horizon here. Is that correct?
The numbers that you saw on the slides on the projection of costs and revenues includes any known cost to date for staffing, services and supplies, and also any potential increases on revenues. So some of that is already included in there, but not all the different factors that CalPERS will bring to the table in 1516 are included yet. We're still performing an analysis of what that will be, and we will bring a report to the council indicating what the impact will be with the budget. I am hoping that by the 25th also, we will have that information, because we are planning to present on that day the, the, all of the financial estimates for 1213, the mid-year report, as well on that meeting.
Because we're, we're going to need to know how this is going to project out for the implementation and those kind of consequences. And, let's see, and again, I see that we're going to be the highest. Have there been any feedback or input from any of the dealerships, which would be probably one of the first cost factors that would be hit on that 9%?
What we understand is that you're, you pay your taxes where you reside. So you can buy a vehicle here, and you're, you're not paying your taxes until you're, wherever your residence is. So we really didn't see that there was going to be much of an impact in that area. We did actually have some discussions about this, and that's what our findings were.
Thank you. And I, I, that, that's all I have for questions at the moment. Thank you.
Great.
Does this money come out of the general fund, that 50,000? Is that general fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, thank you very much for answering all of our questions. Now is the opportunity for members of the public to would feel free to, who would like to comment and provide input on this specific item on the agenda.
Rhea Dehart, member of, resident of District 7. I'm speaking to you tonight as a representative from the Paharo Valley Senior Coalition. And we are really very excited about the sales tax, if it would be placed on the June ballot, along with our petitions, because it's all part of letting the people vote. And I think that's really important, putting it out there to the people. We're very pleased that it's going to be a dedicated sales tax, that it will go for public safety, that it's dedicated to public safety, because in this community, public safety has been underfunded. The Fire Department and the Police Department, their budgets are really underfunded. So I think it's really important that it be tied down as a dedicated tax. And a 2/3 vote means that the people really approve of it. The only recommendations I have is, I would look more favorably, we'd look more favorably on a five-year, as many bonds do and parcel tax have, a five-year sunset date, because it's a good time to readjust, and the public by that time will know how you're really spending your money, and they will maybe enthusiastically support a longer one. The other recommendation is the Oversight Committee. With school bonds, you have great Oversight Committees. But there, it's detailed in Prop 39, how those Oversight Committees are set up to represent stakeholders, categories within your community, so that all your stakeholders have a representation on those Oversight Committees that really review how the money is spent. I've served on them, many people in this community have served on the Oversight Committees for school bonds, and I think that would be a great committee to do the Oversight. Not that some members of your present committee couldn't serve in different categories, but you want to make sure all your stakeholders, even the youth group, even your educational groups, even your homeowner groups, got a lot of homeowner associations in here, that all of them are represented on your Oversight Committee.
Thank you for your comments.
Rebecca Garcia, District 5. Good evening, mayor, city council members, staff, and of the audience. I'm here this evening to support any one of you who hopefully will ask the questions of staff that I'm going to ask of you. To win a sales tax measure by 2/3 vote, you need a campaign. So my questions are, what is the details, what are the details for that campaign? Will the city hire a city manager? What materials, such as brochures and mailings, be used to convince city voters to vote yes? Who will recruit and organize volunteers to make phone calls and go door-to-door knocking? Will there be television, radio, or newspaper advertisement? So what will be the cost of running a campaign, of this particular campaign? That cost is going to be added to the cost of the survey, which will be added to the cost of TBWB. That's going to be added to the cost of putting the measure on the ballot. It's going to be more than $50,000. So I think you need to ask those questions to find out what the total cost of having this measure on the, on the ballot and winning this ballot is going to be before you make any decisions on any resolutions. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to come forward and speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and return the discussion back to City Council.
I had a paperwork question.
Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
On page three of 11 that was in our packet with regarding the agreement, it, it appears to me that we're agreeing on something that is in hindsight on the dates on the section two of the terms of the agreement. Are those dates correct? Or why are we, because we're moving forward with the next phase of the, the cost. So can I make sure that we've got the right dates that are showing up on that section, please?
Yes, actually, there was a revised page three that was sent to you. There was an, an error made on the dates. So what, the effective date should be, should be from January through March. We believe that all the efforts actually will be completed by the end of February. But we, in exercising some caution, we actually enter into the contract from the, from tomorrow, if you approve it, until the end of March.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the appropriate motion directing staff to return with the resolution to council on February 25th, 2014, calling for a resolution for special public sales tax, and also a resolution approving the contact with, contract with TBW for Phase 2 development of the revenue measure.
I'd like to second that.
There's been a motion by Councilmember Dodge, and a second by Councilmember Montesino. Dr. Bilicich?
I would like to have some answers to Ms. Garcia's questions prior to that. $50,000 plus, what do we anticipate?
The city cannot use public funds for any campaigning, so the $50 will be the-
50,000?
That'll be the end of our involvement. The 50,000, yes, that'll be the end of our involvement. Then there will have to be a private effort, that we'll have to use private funds to actually do the campaign.
Okay, so 50,000 is what we see, anticipate as the most?
That's all the city can participate, and the city's not allowed legally to participate in a, once it becomes a ballot question on the February 25th, then it has to become a private campaign financed by private dollars.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Montesino?
I think the community would look at this as a needed effort for, for public safety. I think it's, it's going to be worthwhile for people to vote for this. But I know people don't think of the, I talked to many people, and they don't think the sales tax is going to prevent people from shopping here. I know, talking to different people around the county, they're, they're, they're doing our demise when they, when they built the other Home Depot at 41st, which we're still very successful on, in Home Depot. They, they did our demise again when they opened up the Target at 41st. We're, we're still very successful. So I think, I, I think people are undermining us, and I think, I concur with Chairperson Vargas, that I think it's going to be a successful ballot. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
You know, we can only, we can only go so far with doing more with less, and it's, I think it's about time that we move on this right now. I just hope that we continue seeking the grants that the PD has been, you know, so certainly seeking those grants that they usually get, and they continue doing that as well. I look forward to this passing as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge?
Thank you very much, Ms. Madam Mayor. For a long time, I feel that I've been trying to advocate the needs for the city of Watsonville, even though I proposed unsuccessful measure last year. It was direct, really, to address the needs for sales tax revenue, to provide services that are necessary in this community. There's an example of, and I'm still taking a lot of heat from the Farm Bureau and the anti-growth people in the community, and I don't want to put stuff in newsletters, I'd rather answer them right here in the public. And that being said, I really do believe that there's support out here for, we spend 65% of our budget on fire and, and police. So we really do support public safety, but it's not enough. We, the level of service that we expect from our public safety, when we pick up the phone, we want them, we expect them to call. And we're at a crisis in this community where that if, I, I commend the Oversight Committee for recognizing that we're facing difficult challenges. Our employees have not received a raise in over five years. We're, we're facing a time when there's possible reduction of services. And I think that we really need to recognize that. We need to be able to articulate the, the message of, we need to be, I, I'm a, I'm not a big fan of raising, to having the highest sales tax in, in the county. Not without the, the shopping centers or the development, that, that we, we need to be able to bring additional revenue into the community. That being said, I think we need to be proactive. This has been a very progressive. I know that there's a lot of people that are, we heard from tonight, that are opposed to this progressive council, that's been able to look at creating, tough, facing challenges and difficult times, and I'm, I'm supportive of this measure. And I do look forward to going to the, I, I believe with our police chief and our fire, and our fire chief, I believe they're well-respecting this community, and I look forward to them being the face of this community to be able to answer any questions and continue dialogue with members of the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes, as it's been said earlier here this evening, and many times in, on all our meetings, it's the community who, who needs to come together and will come together to find solutions, and, and people do need to, to step up and help out and, and unify and focus on what I think are the real problems in the community. So I, I particularly want to thank DeeDee Vargas, and John Martinelli, and Charles Bailey, and Gina Castaneda, and Bill Hanson, and Gary Manfree, Corey Schaefer, and Renee Mello, and, and all the other people who sat in and, and helped out in, in getting us this far. And so, let's move forward.
Okay, and final comments from Dr. Bilicich?
I just want to be, I hope that you, chief, will hear the residents in District 7 and come through with some type of plan for that third fire station, that there's a way that it can be incorporated in this also. Thank you.
So I just want to finally comment and just thank again the Oversight Committee for a lot of their work and dedication to sorting through the numbers and also the data. And I think this data is very powerful in the way that it's presented. We saw both the positives and the negatives. We also got to hear from those community members that responded, you know, how far they're, they're willing to go, and it sounds like they're, they're willing to go a long way to have safer communities and safer neighborhoods and support our public safety departments, both fire and police. So with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Bilicich?
To move forward with the survey, yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Yes.
Great. Motion carries. Thanks all of you for your patience and hanging in there with us.
Thank you, and I think that shows a united front. Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Item 8.3 is our responses to the current drought conditions, and we do have a staff report from our Public Works and Utilities Director, Mr. Paul Mazano.
Good evening, Mayor Cervantes and members of the City Council. I'm here to give you an update on the drought conditions and some proposed actions the city can take in response to our current situation. So here's a map of current conditions in the United States, and as you can see from the red in California, we are being hit the hardest of anybody by the drought nationwide, and here's a close-up of it. So it just essentially means we are seeing the lowest levels of rainfall actually that have ever been recorded in the city. And so here's a rain gauge going back to 1940. We actually have rain data going back 134 years. I didn't want to show it all, but you can see the mouse. You can see the very end, the, the little red dot at the very end is our rainfall this year, .8 inches, compared to an average of 22 inches a year. So it's incredibly low, and something we're going to have to deal with. Another measure of the low rainfall is our river levels. Again, the green line shows our average stream flow in the Paharo River, over 100,000 acre feet, and we're seeing just a very small percentage of that this year as well. Here's a more visual picture of Corletos Creek a year ago and now. Moving in here to change topics, I wanted to review with you the city's water system, so you have a good overview of, of how our system works and how this relates, how the drought relates to us. So as you can see, the city is in the, the red line here is the outline of the city limits, and our water service area actually extends far up into Corletos, as well as over to Sunset Creek, and we serve over 65,000 customers. 90% of our water comes from groundwater wells. We have 14 wells throughout our service area and produce nearly 7,000 acre feet per year. 10% of our water on a normal year comes from Corletos and Browns Creek. We're getting very little from that source this year, of course. We have six storage reservoirs, and those altogether hold 10 million gallons of water. And now moving into kind of regional conservation efforts, the state passed some regulate, some laws a couple of years ago, setting a goal that every area of California would reduce their water use by 20% by the year 2020. And so our goal along the central coast here is 117 gallons per person per day. And as you can see across the state, we already have the lowest water use, and so, because we have been conserving for a long time in this region. And even then, the, the target of 117 gallons per person per day is the goal for 2020, and we have already reached that. As you can see in the green bar, we're at 114 gallons per person per day. And the overall goal for the state of California under this plan is 154. So we're way ahead of the rest of the state as it is. Another measure of the success of our past 20 years of conservation efforts is shown in this graph, where you can see, over the last 17 years, our population has grown by about 30%, and we are actually using slightly less water today than as compared to 1995. We have an excellent water supply source. Our water is extremely good, clean, and meets the Health Department requirements consistently over the years. So we're very lucky and blessed to have a, a stable end source supply of water in our aquifer in terms of water quality. We are part of a larger groundwater basin, and this picture shows the city of Watsonville here, again, our water distribution system, and then the larger Paharo Valley groundwater basin that we are part of. And as you all know, our groundwater basin is in overdraft, and one of the results of overdraft is seawater intrusion. overdraft is seawater intrusion. And here this picture shows the extent of the seawater intrusion. Here's a more recent picture of that seawater intrusion and I think that it says a lot here, actually. Here again is the city of Watsonville, just to orient you, and here are the different phases as the seawater intrusion has come inland. And one thing to note is that in more recent years, the intrusion rate has slowed down. It's a much smaller line. And the recent PVWMA groundwater modeling has shown that the recycled water facility itself has made a tremendous difference in the rate of that seawater intrusion, that it does, I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but it, oops, go back. It does, it has made a big difference in terms of slowing down that rate of intrusion. And so we do work, of course, very cooperatively with PVWMA as partners in solving this issue on a regional basis and this, our role in constructing and funding the recycled water facility has played a huge part of managing our basin. Also, I always like to make sure everybody is made aware of the fact that the city water system uses about 12% of the water in the groundwater basin. Other urban uses, residential and other non-city water sources use about 4%, but 84% of water is used by agriculture. So what are we doing about water in the Paharo Valley? Of course, we operate the recycled water facility with PVWMA. We have our water conservation outreach programs, which I'll go into more detail in a few minutes. And we also are looking at ways to maximize our source, our use of surface water by upgrading our facilities at Corletos Creek, which has a design completed and we're looking for funding. So our recycled water facility produces up to 4,000 acre feet of year of recycled water and this graph shows the ever-increasing use of that water by farmers. PVWMA is getting more and more subscribers. And I think what's impressive to me on this slide is that there are, we have supplied over 20,000 acre feet of water over the last 10 years to the agricultural community, which is partly why that intrusion rate has slowed down. Again, you can see the deliveries are increasing with each year, which is a great success for the region. And this chart shows the overall trends of water use in our valley since 2000 and you can see it goes up and down. The top line, the bars coming down show rainfall. So it's very interesting to see that, of course, as it rains less, we use more. And so we've had a big jump in water use from a few years ago when it was under 50,000 acre feet for the valley, up to over 60,000 acre feet for 2013. It's a big jump and largely due to low rain conditions. So I'd like to switch gears and talk about the city's efforts and all the things we've been doing for over 15 years to address water use in the Paharo Valley and in our community. We have a multifaceted water conservation program that includes all sorts of plumbing retrofits, toilet rebates, toilet retrofits, people. We have this great service where people come into people's homes and do water audits. They identify opportunities for replacing showerheads, faucets and toilets, do that for them, take away their old toilets. It's a wonderful service and has been very popular. We have our regular rebate program to replace high-flow toilets and we have replaced over 5,000 toilets through this program. We have our high-efficiency washer rebate program and a very intensive and active community outreach program, working social media, radio media, radio, general paper media and outreach events. We have a very active and engaged community outreach team. And one of our more unique and successful aspects of the program is our school program where we bring over 3,000 students through our water, wastewater and wetlands and landfill over each year. And so that, along with our adult education program combined, we've calculated recently that we have educated over 52,000 adults and students through this program. That's almost the entire population in this community, which is another reason why I think our program has been so successful. So other conservation efforts we have in place are development standards requiring water-efficient landscaping and low-flow fixtures for new developments. And we have a groundwater impact fee that helps fund our water conservation efforts. And again, this is another way to look at the per-connection water use goes down and has been going down for the last 15 years. So the next question is, our drought response and how do we do more? And that's a very good question. And one of the ways we do this is through landscape conservation, is our next big area of moving forward in conservation. And we've demonstrated this ourselves by applying landscape conservation principles to all of our parks or majority of our parks. And through this, we were able to reduce water use by 83% in many of our parks. That was our biggest success story, I think that was at Ramsey Park. But overall, these have had a tremendous success and we are looking to bring this same kind of service to our community. We have a, basically, we've done it as a pilot project and at a small scale of offering landscape audits to anybody in our community. And we've had a fairly low participation in that because I don't think we've done enough outreach on that. And that is our next phase, is to do additional outreach and put some additional resources toward this landscape audit program and get more people involved. I think there's a lot of savings that can be had. One of the big things we can promote is people removing their grass. Grass is a big water user. We don't live in an area that really supports that kind of water use. And so we're helping people move to drought-tolerant plants and drip irrigation, which is more appropriate for our climate. We also are going to begin enforcing water waste. We have a water waste ordinance in place and we do enforce it regularly, but I think if now is a good time to really up the level of enforcement on that. And we are looking at additional water conservation efforts in our commercial, industrial and businesses sectors. The other more regional action we're looking at is, of course, partnering with PVWMA and looking for grant funding to fund some additional water storage tanks, which will help increase the effectiveness and the availability of recycled water for farming and ultimately increase the use of that recycled water. We're also always looking for funding for our Corletos filter plant upgrade, which won't help as a drought response, but will help in the long-term in terms of using more surface water and ultimately taking less water out of the ground. So that's the significance of that project. So we have a resolution before you for your consideration to ask our community to participate in a 20% water reduction effort in response to Governor Brown's declaration of a drought emergency. And of course, the Department of Public Works and Utility is ready and willing to help our community reach this goal. And so with that, I'd like to end my presentation with the customer service number 768-3133 where people can call to sign up for any of our conservation programs or landscape audits. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Belisic, now is the time for City Council questions.
Yes, City Council questions, here we go. First of all, I want to commend the residents for everything they've done and I commend your department for everything that you've done to educate the public because I think the residents have done a great job. So I'm a little bit concerned and I know we're in a drought and we're asking for 20% more reduction, but when you look at the big chart, the big user has always been ag. What are they doing to cut back? And residents, it said we were supposed to cut to 154 and they're already at 114? And we're asking them to cut to, what's the 117 again?
117 was the goal for the central coast region.
Okay, that was the goal and we already have it.
2020.
We already are at 114.
Yes.
And so it's hard to ask them to do more. I'm glad it's voluntary. I wouldn't like to see a lot of penalties. I mean, I would talk to people about runoff and things, but it looks like the residents with all of the education are already doing a great job.
They really are.
They really are and they should be commended. So a voluntary reduction, that's great. I think if people want to participate and can, but already people have reduced a lot and I think they should be commended for that, if you look at the statistics. Thank you.
And just to respond in terms of what the ag community is doing, Paharo Valley Water Management Agency also passed a very similar resolution, asking all of the farmers to also participate in this 20% reduction. So they are looking at that and working towards that.
Good. Councilmember Dodge.
Paharo Valley Water Management passed this resolution when?
Last week.
And that was the 20% reduction in agricultural usage in the valley? Thank you. My question pertains to, I think that, you know, I know the 20% number that we're using across the state and that's the number that's been given, but I kind of agree with, in the sense that we've already asked our residents and they're doing this exemplary job, another 20% when being less than 15% of the total use in the valley. It's a tough thing to ask folks to be able to do, although I'd be supportive of it. What is it that the city, as a city, we've already reduced, meaning our facilities, our parks? What would the 20% reduction mean towards the city facilities, such as parks? Are we going to quit watering parks? Because I have Callahan Park in my district, very well-used, it's a destination spot and such like that. I'm trying to visualize what would happen to Callahan, I'll use that as an example. What would happen to Callahan with that kind of 20% watering reduction? Are you anticipating stopping, you know, watering on certain days? What's that look like?
The 20% reduction is a goal and what I would say is, our effort is to help everybody look and work towards that goal in any way and every way that we can that's practical and workable. And so I have no intention of proposing mandatory, you know, irrigation cutoffs. I mean, that would be a council kind of action to take, but I think we can look at our facilities, review, I'm sure there are opportunities to reduce watering in our various city facilities. Even though we've done a lot of work in that area, there's probably more work we can do. So we'll just be reviewing all of our facilities and making sure we have conservation efforts in place to make sure we are at the maximum we can do. And I think that's the same of what we can ask of our community because they have done so much over the last 15, 20 years.
Would that mean in the future, looking at taking some of the facilities that we have and restrooms and such and changing urinals to waterless urinals and such like that, is that a possibility that we're looking at?
Right, absolutely.
The same.
Councilmember Hearst.
Thank you. I think the residents have done a marvelous job of conservation and we may be not quite there all the way with residential conservation, but we're closer than most municipalities, I think. You know, I've noticed that a lot of people have stopped watering their lawns and in some cases, they've redone it with landscaping and other places, they just stopped watering their lawn and now they're parking cars on it or they're, you know, it's just barren dirt. And so this also kind of reduces the property values in the city when landscaping is no longer maintained. There needs to be more of an awareness as to other things that people could do besides a water hog lawn and know that there is hope for landscaping beyond grass and that just because the price of water is high, relatively speaking, and that, you know, we're in a conservation mode, there still needs to be alternative information for folks to maintain their property values and that in their neighborhoods.
So we are still on the part of the agenda where we're asking questions of staff?
Well, my question is, what are we doing to promote the replacement of lawns with alternative, less water-consuming plants? If you need a question.
That would be our landscape conservation audits that we will be promoting more and making the community more aware that these are available for people.
Vice Mayor Hernandez.
Are we going to be taking advantage of some of the PSAs that we can have made? I think it'd be great if we can do tips, pointers, best practices.
Absolutely.
Maybe switching, I've seen some of the new AstroTurf that there is now and it's really nice, it kind of looks real. So I think those PSAs would be really important to do, maybe once a month or twice a month or something, maybe more.
Yes, that's definitely on our agenda.
Councilmember Belisic and then Councilmember Kaufman Gomez.
Just quickly, you're not saying to residents, take out your lawns today, are you? We're not saying that.
We're not saying, no, we're not saying you have to do that.
So they can still water.
We're offering them.
Other alternatives if they're going to re-landscape or do other things so that they would have drought-tolerant plants if they choose to do so.
Right.
It's not a mandatory thing.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Again, one comment is I'm very impressed with the 83% reduction for the water usage for the city for the results that you've given us, so kudos to that. The rain sensor rebate program, I'm not sure I'm aware of that type of program, but it would be pretty good for us having flyers within our utility bills so that we can keep encouraging and emphasizing what this is all about to put into play and how to reach the city on these different options to figure out how to make it work. Do we have anything with like the car wash facilities? Is there anything that's being measured about that or a possible reduction? Or is there a recycle process going on or is it just going down the drain? Anything that comes from?
Most of our car washes actually do recycle their water several times before it's sent to the sewer system.
Okay. And then my other question, and this is sort of like maybe off the wall, but we're bringing in gallons and gallons of bottled water that's being sold at all of these stores. Do we have any measurable volume of how much we're actually bringing into the city and selling by that bottled water that's now going into our system in terms of reclamation? Any gauge measure or figures of, because that's water that isn't already counted from our table because it's being introduced in?
The only way we really can measure that is just the production, you know, this kind of, we have the numbers of how much inflow comes through our sewer system into the recycled water facility and that's how we measure it, but we don't have any specific data that way.
Other than probably looking at the sales side of it and figure out how many gallons were sold kind of thing to bed it. I'm just curious because, you know, we only have so much of what we only have, but we are introducing quite a bit more from outside sources and I don't know how much of an impact that's had. Those were just some of the comments and questions I've had. Thank you.
And just my final question, I wanted to ask what's involved sort of with the landscape audit if someone calls and requests that of city staff?
What they do is they come to your home and they walk around your yard, you know, with the person, the client, and they identify, they look at their irrigation system if they have one and look for ways to make that more efficient. They look at the landscaping, they make suggestions on replacing plants or replacing lawn. I think that's the main thing. They look at if they have an irrigation system, if it is overspraying, if it's spraying too much or going under the sidewalk or the street. They work with them, they actually help them fix some of those things or recommend, you know, somebody who can. So that's the kind of work they do.
Great. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and turn this over for public input if there's any members of the community, the audience that would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Seeing no public comment, I will go ahead and return this to City Council for some additional and I hope minimal discussion. Yes, Councilmember Kaufman Gomez, I saw your hand up first.
I'm just ready to go ahead and move on the resolution to request the participation.
Yeah, you got it. So like.
It's great, let's go.
Right.
So motion by Councilmember Kaufman Gomez, second by Councilmember Dodge. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, as a matter of fact. Seeing as I've been a big proponent for everybody having their three minutes up here and the right to be able to do that, we've enforced that this evening, allowed members of the public to speak. I wish some of the members of the public that were so dissatisfied with some of the efforts of things that are going on in the city would have stayed to be able to recognize and hear the efforts we've done to be able to recycle water. Another part of my, Watsonville is the most progressive city in the county agenda because everybody wonders what my agenda is. So I thank you for my three minutes, Madam Mayor. I'm very supportive of this. I am concerned that, in the sense that we only use 14% of the water in the watershed, I would like to, I don't look forward to seeing some fields not being used, but that's what it probably would take. fields not being used, but that's what it probably would take to be able to have a real 20% reduction by some of the agribusiness in our community. So I think the residents of, of the city are going to be the ones that are taking, are balancing the back of some of these reduction efforts. And so I, I would look forward to us, some of the things we talked about with the, the drought-tolerant plants and educating our community to that. That, that's really important and I look forward to see our efforts increase in that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes, I would just add to that and say that maintaining the parks is so much more important than whatever name they might have or who's going to name them.
Let's remember to speak to the motion.
I thought that was.
Councilmember Belisic?
Just very quickly, I would like to make sure that this is emphasized that this is a voluntary effort.
True.
And if, in regard to farmers, I know that they're going to participate also, but look at some of the overspray on the roads. You know, you're driving down the road and there's your windshield, because they're overwatering. So I hope that they also address this. But it is voluntary and I think that's great. Thank you.
And I also just wanted to throw out a plug for the Climate Action Plan Committee that's meeting, that includes myself and other community members. And there you sort of do see a very explicit thorough outline of what the city is doing as well. And I know that that's going to be coming forward to, to the Planning Commission for Review. So I encourage anybody interested in sort of seeing what the city is currently doing, including water conservation, but also reducing emissions as well. That's going to be a great opportunity for that. And as well as sort of seeing what the vision is for the city as well to continue to reduce emissions and continue conserving even more water, especially given the current context that we find ourselves in. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Belisic?
Yes.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Yes. Thank you very much. And you aren't moving very far, but we also have our engineer, Maria Esther, here with us today to give us a status update on Highway One and the Harkins Slough Project.
That's right. Good evening, Mayor of City Council. As you mentioned, this is in, an update on our Highway One Harkins Slough Road Project. This project may predate many of us, so I wanted to give you a brief history and overview.
Nothing predates being old.
I wasn't born yet, so.
You didn't have a driver's license then.
Okay. This, the, this, this project was actually something that's been in the works for quite a, quite a bit of time. And what I have in front of you is an aerial photo of Watsonville before many projects that we all know and love today were constructed. And the project was proposed, that is proposed, the Highway One Harkins Slough would be in this area here. And again, this is a photo before a lot of the development has happened that has been ongoing. The project that was proposed was back in the 90s. There were project studies, some reports that were done that looked at what Watsonville was going to become with some development on the city's west side, which is this area down here, which is now along Aloney Parkway, et cetera. A lot of development that happened there. So it was before all, all of these things were developed. And we looked at the need and what traffic would be and what it would like, look like when these areas developed. So again, this is how it exists today, the interchange. Currently, this is Highway One. This is Harkins Slough Road over crossing, and these are the existing ramps. And what's the studies and that project report showed at that time was that there was a need to update that interchange. And what is proposed to do was to reconstruct the interchange, go from two lanes, as it is today, to four lanes, include some ramps from Highway One to the north. So that would include an off-ramp coming essentially from Santa Cruz area and then also include an on-ramp to go north. It would also include, along with those four lane for, for vehicles, it would include some pedestrian improvements and bicycle lanes. And also, it would also involve signalization of some of, of the ramps that we had pointed out and some improvements at Main and Green Valley, which is very impacted by traffic that travels through there and also along that corridor. The project study report, which is a necessary document to move forward with this type of project, was completed in 1998. And with that project report, we were able to secure funding through the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission to do construction and some right-of-way funding for that project. This is essentially an overview of what I described. These ramps are the ones that would be proposed to be built. And this is the overcrossing signalization of this intersection here. And then again, along the corridor. Just to give you a frame of reference, Pahravalle High School is here to the, on the west here. And this is where West Ridge Business Park, et cetera, exists along here. But as you know, things change over time. So there were a number of changes that happened in the early 2000s after that project study report was completed. One of the things that happened was there was movement and some changes at Caltrans, and they started reviewing again some of those studies. And they had some concerns with some of the outcomes that were expected with some of these improvements on, in the traffic studies. Along with that came a lot of development that happened on the city, on the city's west side, as I, I mentioned, along with the construction of Aloney Parkway. There was Seabview Ranch, Las Briesas, and other subdivisions that happened. Also, we looked at a new high school. That was not something that had been originally programmed in that area. But that was a project that was developed during that time. Traffic studies were also conducted for the high school. And along with those traffic studies, approvals for the high school also affected this particular project because the local coastal plan put restrictions that the ramps included in this project description. It was very specific to make sure that those ramps were not to be constructed because of the high school, but to address traffic overall. The other things that happened were construction of a number of bridges. One was in the county and that indeed served to get to the high school. And the other ones were new bridges that the city constructed along Harkins Slough Road over the Strew Slough and Watson, Watsonville Slough Bridge. This, this photo in front of you shows in yellow the, the changes that happened. So you see the high school that got built, the new bridge that was put in the county, another big change, the new bridges that the city installed along Harkins Slough Road. And the, the blue arrows signify how traffic changed with those additions and with the developments of the new subdivisions down here on Aloney Parkway. So there was a lot of things that changed and that also made for the need for updated studies. Because what we saw, along with the development of these, there was, right after the boom of development, there was a downturn in the economy. So along with these changes, physical changes that happened, there were a, a lot of shifts in traffic. And again, some of those blue arrows signify kind of where traffic was going. But we also found that what a full interchange would bring to this area would also impact what was happening with traffic going to the school. And it would change that quite a bit. I have pictures showing traffic along the, in that area. And as you can tell, there's a lot of pedestrians that use it, especially at school time. Traffic that comes on and off the freeway, getting to school, you can see in the background there, the amount of traffic that goes to the school. We have pedestrians all along that corridor. So indeed, congestion in that area is indeed something that we have to address. It is, it is a reality and we want to see how to best address these, these issues. So the project moving forward, we've, over the years, we've had ongoing collaborations with Caltrans, as it, Highway One and the ramps associated with it is a Caltrans facility. They were involved in the project study report. So again, ongoing collaboration with the state. The Regional Transportation Commission is also involved because we did, did indeed secure funding through the RTC for this project. And then of, of course, city staff is involved with ongoing studies as project lead on those studies. The most recent studies that were completed were about a year ago. And there was, those were traffic studies to see what we're seeing today, based on all those items we, I mentioned earlier with the changes in traffic, with the development, with school traffic, et cetera. What does traffic look like today and what would a preferred alternative project look like based on that traffic? So the components of a preferred alternative for the project would be slightly different than they were in the original project study report. The most important aspects of that would indeed be still address traffic at the ramps, especially the off-ramp because of what's happening there on Harkins Slough Road, both coming into town and going to the high school. Looking again at that Harkins Slough, Green Valley Road corridor from Main Street all the way to the overcrossing there at Highway One. And then also the most, I guess, the most recent component would be looking at a bicycle and pedestrian overcrossing to address more safely the crossing of students and cyclists walking and biking to school. The, the photo in front of you depicts where schematically those improvements may be. So while, while the previous project study report did indeed address a full reconstruction of the existing bridge, what we find is the preferred alternative again would be the separate bridge because the, to reconstruct the full interchange and address the, the highway bridge as it currently exists would be a much more costly project than it was 15 or 20 years ago when the project was initially thought of. The other part, we would still address the ramp operations at the off-ramp. And again, the corridor from Green Val, Harkins Slough, Green Valley corridor to address, to try and improve traffic operations along that corridor. And again, that would be the preferred alternative, which is slightly different of how it was presented in the project study report. And for that reason, the next steps involved in moving this particular project or this particular preferred alternative forward would be to request reprogramming of that project and that funding for this preferred alternative. So the next steps that would be involved is we will present on the next council meeting a proposal letter requesting that that project be, the preferred alternative project be considered and the funds reprogrammed for the alternative project. Again, that would be something that would be put forward to our city council for action at the next council meeting. And then once our, our council takes action, it would then go to the Regional Transportation Commission for their action to reprogram those funds for this project. That concludes my report and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilmembers, questions please? Councilmember Dodge?
Well, I thank you for your presentation, although that's not necessarily, it was a very nice job of revision history because there's a lot of components.
Oh, there is.
That, that, that you didn't go into, such as the no-growth advocates, the leadership of the county board of supervisors at the time, the, the LAFCO at that point restricting us, the gun being held to our head, I mean, excuse me, let me rephrase that. We were put restriction, unprecedented restrictions to be able to get Pahravalle High built by the, by the Coastal Commission and the no-growth advocates from the northern part of the county that were successful in limiting the options of Watsonville to move west of the freeway. That being said, I, I think that some of the growth patterns that you, you showed, well, they were kind of particularly laid out. And myself, I was on the planning commission back in those days. And so the bridges that we constructed were due part to, am I, am I going along fine with this, Mr. City Manager, you know? In the sense that, 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 well, I'm being tame because it was late at night, but that being, that being said, the bridges that we were constructed over Harkins Slough were part of the target development that was at that time and was tied to some of those, some of those developments that, that happened, including accessibility and to being able to get into Las Briesas and Seabview Ranch and such like that. So I think what you're, what you're proposing is, is fine. But explain again, so the, for the purpose of us that are involved in the regional transportation, the purpose of advocating for adding an additional bridge as opposed to shutting it down. One, that I'd be, I'd be hesitant to shut it down because it's the only way in and out of Pahravalle High. But could you explain what the, what the purpose and the recommendation would be to add an, an additional causeway?
Okay, there's actually some nuances to what was done. For example, the bridge that was built by, in the county going to the school is located here. The bridge that exists is here. The existing overcrossing is indeed a Caltrans bridge. There are some issues with the bridge itself. So if we propose to reconstruct it, we would indeed, again, still work with Caltrans. But it, it is, one of the deficiencies is it is too low. There's not adequate clearance underneath the bridge, so it'd need to be raised. And that would trigger in a whole new level of changes to the trap, to, I'm sorry, to the construction because the bridge put in here would then need to be modified. It would not only include construct, reconstruction of the existing over, over crossing, but it would also kick in some modifications to this bridge or reconstruction of that bridge.
And really, really quick, so why, why aren't you proposing an additional off-ramp from the, in the southbound direction on Highway One?
We, we also found that with the, with the pedestrian and bicycle usage, that additional ramp would pose just another, it would, I'm sorry, introduce traffic where it is not now. And it would produce another crossing for pedestrians and vehicles and cyclists. It would just produce another intersection. And it was found that while providing those ramps there, one of the problems, or one of the problems identified in the earlier project study report, identified those ramps as providing a relief to the intersection of Main and Green Valley. Because currently, if you're coming from the Santa Cruz, if you're coming from the north, from the Santa Cruz area, to enter into Watsonville, you have to go into, off, off of the ramp to get into Green Valley and Main Street. That's where the intersection is. And that gets very impacted. The level of service proves up to be at a, almost an unacceptable level at some periods of the day, actually.
I would assume so.
Yeah. So the ramp originally was thought to really provide a lot of relief to that intersection. And what the current traffic studies show is that while it does provide a little relief, the cost benefit doesn't show relief, enough relief to, to, to justify the ramp.
So you're saying it's, it's a cost factor as opposed to, are you saying it's a safety factor and a cost factor?
Cost and safety factor, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Montesino, you brought this up to the agenda, your questions?
Yeah, no, thank you for the historical because, you know, I wasn't born then.
I can fill you on historical later, man.
But, but this really puts a, a, a perspective on this because everybody keeps asking, because this is actually the only. this is actually the only school in my district, and there, there, I always get a few calls or emails on this. But I wanted to ask, so between all the changes, what's the cost factors? Is it the same amount?
It is indeed approximately the same amount with the funding that we have so far. The approximate cost estimates to date, now we haven't done refined design, but based on similar pedestrian bicycle bridges that have gone in, that particular component is in the $7 million range. The intersection, the, the signalized intersection or operational improvements at the ramp, along with the corridor improvements, those improvements could range, you know, between $200,000 to $500,000. And any other improvements along Main Street, we still have to study a bit further in order to identify what specific those might be. And those refined studies would also be in the next phase of the project. But we anticipate about an $8 million project with all these components.
Really?
Okay. So do you, do you need, do you need Coastal Commission approve on?
Um, my understanding, there, we will be landing, so to speak, with this proposed pedestrian bicycle bridge on the west side of Highway One, so it may require that. However, I see planner.
I see key stepping in. It would require Coastal Commission.
And however, my understanding is that it, with all the issues that have been brought up in the past with the school traffic, it would be a preferred alternative, since it is bicycle and pedestrian, it isn't what would be considered growth inducing. It would be to, it would be to, to deal with the existing bicycle and pedestrians that use the roadway to get to the other side of the highway.
Councilmember Hearst, your questions?
Yes, my question is, the bridge is inadequate height-wise that goes across a freeway now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Wouldn't Caltrans want to address that deficiency?
They may. However, this is, it's not something, in working with them, it's not something they've brought forward that that's a concern that they have. With the original project, it was part of it. The other part was a seismic retrofit, which has since been done. But they're looking at the costs associated with it, the height clearance isn't something that they're very concerned about. However, going back to the earlier question about why, why don't we do it? If we, if we touch anything on this bridge, we would have to make sure it met current standards, which would be the height. By providing a separate but parallel bike and pedestrian facility, we wouldn't have to bring it up to current standards, which would include the clearance.
Do we have a current traffic count on that area, in that intersection?
We do have traffic counts, yes.
What would that be?
I would have to go and check the numbers. I don't recall, but I can provide that.
Approximate?
Thank you.
Approximate?
I'm sorry.
It's a big number, though, right?
It's a big number, yes. But I could certainly provide that coming back to the next meeting.
So now is the opportunity for public input if there's any members of the public wishing to address this on this particular agenda item.
I'm looking at this map, and I know one of our schools is right by that area, and the traffic coming, I'm sorry, Lupi Rivas, Area Seven. But the Coastal Commission is also going to have to consider, you know, we're, we're planning on building a new stadium, a new facility in that area, so that's going to happen, you know, hopefully in the next two or three years, within my lifetime, I hope. But the traffic is really bad in that area, and it's a danger to our students because they're, they're crossing sometimes, and there's a lot of students, you know, sometimes not even paying attention to what they're doing. So there's, there's a lot of congestion in the area, student congestion. So that bridge would help us, but I'm just thinking that, that even the width of that bridge is not even enough to accommodate all the traffic, the, the parents going back and forth and all this. So I would hope that the city is also communicating with the district what they're doing as far as trying to, you know, handle the traffic in that area. So that's just my concern, that hopefully that, there's some communication between both agencies as to what is going to be done in that area.
Great. Thank you for your comments. So you are bringing a letter to us at the next council meeting, so there will be additional opportunities to engage in further discussion at that point. So I do thank you for, for that update that you provided to us. Item 10.2 just includes informational items, written reports regarding our disbursements, including some of the attendance and actions taken on some of the commissions are included there, available online if anybody would like to access those, and available to us as well to have read prior to this meeting. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting.